Welcome this morning. First thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have our Vice Chair lead us in prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Fathers, once again, we come together to conduct the business of the county, and Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy and blessing and allowing us to take care of this business. Father, we ask now that you bless the decisions that we make. We ask you, Lord, to bless our county, our citizens, and our officials. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. We've got, first thing on our agenda was approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, we've got some additions we need to add to the agenda. Underneath the procurement where Sandy Pittman, we're gonna add a number three. Sandy's gonna talk about education lottery funds. Then, under the tax collecting report, we need to charge the tax collector to collect the taxes. After our DSS Director, Lulu's got an issue she wants to bring to us at the community center. And then, we're gonna remove the rezoning request for Tommy Ward. That'll be moved to the night meeting. And then, under there, we'll add another one. On the under margins will be grass mowing length. And then, under new business, we'll add a C. Commissioner Jordan will talk about the old courthouse committee. We'll also be removing the closed session because that issue took care of itself during the week. Entertaining motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next, we have the approval of the minutes. Have any amendments to the minutes? Oh, come on. I know you, somebody's got something.
Oh, he had them corrected earlier.
After four years, at least, or something.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for August as presented with the correction previously given to the clerk to be corrected.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
So move.
We've got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next, we'll have our first instance comments. All right, the first thing on here is Mr. Thomas Hill.
Good morning, Thomas.
Good morning. How y'all doing today?
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, County Manager, County Commissioners, I want to tell you a little bit about a story that happened in the late 90s. When I was just a teenager, I developed cancer. The cancer brought to me a decision I had to make. What was I going to do? My decision was not to have chemo or radiation, it was to cut it out. And with the prayer of the church, I went back for my second surgery after losing two organs, and I was found in remission and been in remission ever since.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And like cancer, debt is a cancer. I've sat in these meetings, and we have an issue with, first off, one of four points I want to make. Dominion power is being raised in January. That's an issue that affects everyone in Gates County. Now, there is several counties in the surrounding area who has brought forth their verbalism in saying, no, we don't want this. The second part of money I would like to discuss is the 10-year loan to the 15-year loan plan. The 15-year loan plan was from Mr. Chapel, the 10-year from Mr. Hora. It could have saved the county a greater amount of money had we went with the 10-year plan. You might be paying more over a month, but less over a span. Next I want to talk about is the library. You gentlemen have fought against the public. The public is still remembering this. As we see it built, the roof, the skeleton of the roof is now put on. These are cancers to Gates County. Anytime you bring forth a debt, it's a cancer. And Mr. Chapel, every time, sir, these have been brought to the county's attention, you, sir, have been the anchor of it by a bipartisan effort of Gates County with both the Republicans and Democrats. I'm calling forth, sir, your resignation. A vote for me would be a vote to get rid of you. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Ann Howe. Okay. Who's that? Chuck? Oh, Chuck. Chuck, sorry, I couldn't read. I was looking, it looked like Charlie. Charlie?
That's my dad's name. County Commissioners, County Manager, members of the audience, I'm Chuck Brothers of 485 Drumhill Road. And I come to you this morning to speak about one of the items on the agenda, which is the zoning ordinance text amendment, and then item five, which is the manufactured homes in the R1 zone or the planning board's recommendation. First and foremost, I think that the Commissioners need to drastically look at what this R1 rezoning with a special use will do to our already established town centers, most especially Sunbury, Core Peak, Gates, Hobbsville, and Yore, where it is mainly a traditional R1 district. I am going on record today, and I have gone on record in the planning board, that I am bitterly opposed to a blanket R1 recommendation of special use in every R1 district in the county. I truly believe that these town centers have got to be represented by what they are, and I truly believe that allowing a special use will degrade and degrade some of these town centers. Case in point, if you look at Sunbury today, you've got a brick ranch that has been for sale and a wood frame structure that has been for sale, and has been for sale for some time. Has the economy presented itself to where it's not been favorable to somebody to buy, probably. I don't know what the price has been. But in my opinion, if they can't sell it in today's environment, and we go and rezone it and have a special use and let the manufactured home come in there, I think that person that's been trying to sell their home is gonna have a harder time. Now, bear in mind, I'm talking specifically about the town centers that I have mentioned. I recognize as a private individual and as a member of the planning board that we have got areas in the county that need to be addressed. Mr. Dan Basemore has brought this up a number of times. The planning board has recognized this at their last month's meeting, and I assume that the planning director will address this on that one topic of what our recommendation was. But, in regards to a comment about available residents, as I just stated, I live on Drumhill Road, and over the last 10 years, that's where the majority of the growth in residential population has gone. Yesterday and the day before, I took the time to do a survey of six roads. Those six roads consist of Willetton Road from the Virginia-Nor Carolina State Line to Parker Road, Page Riddick Road in its entirety, Mallory Buck Road in its entirety, Drumhill Road, Union Branch Road from Drumhill to the State Line, and Hazelton Road. Those six roads, according to Google Earth, represent 21.42 miles of roads. And by my count, there are 77 for-sale or vacant homes or abandoned lots where homes were in that region. That calculates to one vacant house or lot every 3.59 miles. I'd like to see us do more proactive measures, whether the CDB grant can be utilized, and purchasing some of these houses that are in foreclosure. If that can be done, I see a means or where the county can help itself instead of going and trying to rezone areas to bring in something where we've got an area that has got 77 places in it right now where people could live. And when I say we've got 77, I'm talking about structures that have been put in place in the last three years, structures that have been there for, since the locations have been put up, which is Whitehurst subdivision, areas from Gates Bank Road to Parker Road. These houses are in, going in disrepair, and they're growing up. People have abandoned these houses. I think we owe it to ourselves to find out what we can do to find out to get these houses and these parcels with people living in them, instead of trying to rezone to bring other things in. So I would like for your consideration on this, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list, Earl Ranstry.
Well, Henry, I'm gonna do something that I said I wasn't gonna do today, but I'm gonna do it because it's important. Chuck, you all watch my back now. I don't like my back to the audience. When you're controversial as I am, and you remembered what a dead hand is, aces and eights, you don't like to turn your back on anybody. But this was important because Henry had brought it up, and we knew it was coming up. First of all, let me say that Chuck and I probably do agree, and I hope y'all will agree, that in these communities like Core Peak, we just sort of draw a circle, and they're gonna be R1 because that's what the dominant they are. Now, if I understand Commissioner Jordan, I ain't never said that before, have I? It's always Earl and Henry, isn't it?
Earl and Henry.
But, you know, if they look at the dominant part of the county. Well, let me go back and look, all of y'all, in some way, all of y'all came along doing the zoning and after zoning. But the early history that got me involved, Kenny, you might not believe this, but I went for years and hardly ever went to a county commissioner meeting. And it wasn't so long before you went on the board. What happened to me was, Henry, I wanted to give two and a half acres of land to my nephew. Just give it to him. And I go to get the deed, pick up and does the deed, and they said, well, you got to go to the Health Department and pay $150. Now, if I tried to convince you that I didn't have $150, you wouldn't believe me. But at the same time, $150 is more than I spent for a week's groceries at my house. And it was no reason. There wasn't no house going on it. I was just giving him the land. I don't know if that's still in our development ordinance or not, but it needs to come out. But this was before zoning. Then we had the case of Henry, I'm sure is familiar with, before he came along, George Riddick in Patsy Town, which I was involved in. And long about that time, I thought Marsha Langston was gonna throw Beavendore through the window, because Marsha could've done it, I think, because he was kind of a small guy. And I was upset, and I said, well, Marsha, you the one that voted on this stuff. But this is a development ordinance, then came along with zoning. Well, that's a little bit of the history. But why do we zone? Do y'all ever think about it? What is zoning? Why do we have zoning? Well, the number one thing is that zoning's supposed to do is protect your property rights, your value of your property. But it's so that some undesirables don't come in. And you've got a $200,000, $300,000 house, and somebody moves in across the road, and that's not within the zoning ordinance. But I have a real problem with that, Commissioner Henry. We can't control our neighbors unless we own all the land around us. And so, even if we say, okay, you can't have a single wide in Earl Ranstry's neighborhood, but what keeps somebody from coming over there and building a stick-built house, pile junk all over the yard, never cut the grass? So we still got the same problem. And while I see single wides in my neighborhood, it got the prettiest yards and the prettiest flowers anywhere around. So it's, that's the second part of zoning, is a general improvement of the neighborhood, the general appearance of the county. But there's a limit to what you can do with this, and y'all all know that. But the third part is, and this is important, and this is part of zoning that's important, it protects against unwanted businesses. And what I mean, I don't mean that we don't want business, but if you've got a neighborhood, and somebody's gonna go in. Carrington has been fighting for 10 years over topless go-go place down there. And they in court again with it right now, and they got the judge give them 60 more days, and Carrington has spent thousands of dollars. Luckily, they hire a full-time county attorney. But if somebody had a church, and some guy is gonna put a go-go place in beside of it, I don't have anything wrong with going, but you need to, don't be, need to go inside of Henry's church. So this is a key to me, the zoning, is to protect the citizens from unwanted business. Now, I'm gonna talk a long time, Graham, because I talked to Henry about this, and he said he wanted, it's very important, I think, for everybody to understand. So don't even worry about it. I mean, I got my notes here, and I'm gonna try to get through this. But this was brought up at the planning board meeting. How big of area can you rezone? So Henry and Morgan were talking about, we kept hearing about the fact you can't spot zone. Well, what is spot zoning? There's, well, a general definition may be that Henry wants to have one of his children that needs a lot, and he's gonna build it on the folly road. And he comes down and asks me, and said, would you sell him the lot over there outside of Larry yours? And I said, the money is good, you can have it. And he said, well, we got to get it rezoned. And they've rezoned that one lot, this spot zoning. But y'all, as Commissioners, have an important thing, because everything is subject. And Carrington has probably spent more time and money in court than anybody I know in the area. Because you can go in there and rezone it, and as long as nobody challenges you in court, nothing is ever done about it. So how many people in Gates County are gonna go out here and pay $2,500 for a lawyer because of that? So y'all can really do about what you want to. But the thing about the, is, this was asked at the planning board meeting to Morgan, how big an area do we have not to be spot zoned? There was no answer to that. Well, I saw a man that's been in this a lot longer than we have. Talked to him, and he was willing to spend the midnight last night with me to help. The Institute of Government, Henry, is supposed to have somewhere, and you own the computer a lot, four criterias that we have to meet in order to rezone something, a area. So it's real important that we look and find what those four criterias are. He had his laptop, he could've given them to me, I will, we had to do other things, but it's out there. That information is out there from suggestions from the Institute of Government. Now, Joe Green, I got your name wrote down, says Joe Green. That's all, but I know what I'm gonna say about you. I mentioned a couple of years back in this board meeting about that we needed some consultants, professional help on this rezoning. What Joe said to me, something to the effect, well, you think us, we on the planning board, a bunch of dummies? And of course, Joe don't get mad, he wasn't really mad about it, he just made that statement. No, I don't think you're a bunch of dummies, and I don't think the Commissioners are a bunch of dummies. But I don't think there's anyone in here that knows the law. That's why we have professionals. You know, it's expensive to go for a lawyer, but if I, every time I get in a little bit of trouble or something, or something comes up, and I don't know how to handle, I don't go to the Internal Revenue Service by myself. I go with a tax attorney. And I'm not gonna go in there and go head-to-head with those. We need, Henry, before we do anything, we need to know what is legal and what we can do. That's the consultant part, and I can move on down. And I'm in closing, that's the part Graham's been waiting for, in closing. The sun puts out basically the same amount of energy every day, every month, year after year. The sun really doesn't change very much as far as energy to the earth. And so you can count on the fact that if it's real warm in the United States this winter, it's gonna be cold in Moscow. If it's real warm in Moscow, it's probably gonna be cold somewhere else, because the energy is just being moved around by air currents. But it never really changes. The problem that you, as Commissioners, are gonna have to look at is in rezoning, you've got people that want it zoned their way to protect their interest over here. We got people over here that want it zoned their way to protect their interest, and you, as Commissioners, have got to make a decision. You're probably gonna end up making both sides angry, Henry. But the whole bottom line is, when you take away my rights and give them to somebody else, I think that's unfair. And when you take away somebody else's rights and give them to me, that's also unfair. So y'all have got a real challenge, and I'd like to see it done right this time.
Thanks, Earl. All right, next, Sidney.
Good morning, Commissioners. How you doing?
Good morning, Sidney. How you doing?
My name's Sidney Pierce, Republican candidate for the Hoseville District. And I'm here today to talk about the Commerce Park. But before I do, I would like to mention that in the last couple of days, we passed an important milestone for our national government. We hit $16 trillion for our national debt. Our country's dealing with a major debt problem that we can't seem to be able to reduce for some reason. But in regards to the Commerce Park, I do oppose the park. And I'd like to read now a short passage from an article which helps to support my position. It starts with Representative Owens and Senator Bassnight enjoyed widespread popularity, often working together to bring home big state grants to one of the poorest regions in North Carolina. Two of the last projects they got funded were business parks in Camden and in Pasquotank County, where millions in grants built infrastructure to attract companies. But the sites remain vacant with no prospects, and they could become political issues in the fall against the Bassnight and Owens replacements. Now, both of these projects were supported by very powerful men in the General Assembly, who funneled millions upon millions of dollars into both these projects, and yet they still failed. Now, our Commerce Park, to my knowledge, is not being supported by any member in the General Assembly. And we're only putting in maybe a fraction of the amount of money that what these two projects had into theirs. These two projects failed. How can we believe that our project gonna stand any better of a chance of success than these two projects? And of course, these two projects are only two. All over the country, we have hundreds and hundreds of examples of these projects failing. There was a very bad track record of these projects in terms of failure. And I've also had a source to tell me that the developer for the Commerce Park over here is starting to get cold feet, and is looking, or trying to look for a way out of this project. Now, this doesn't surprise me at all, because, again, these projects have a really bad track record of failure. So this doesn't surprise me at all. It's part of the reason why I oppose it. But another thing about this whole project is the fact that we are building infrastructure in what is basically an empty field. Now, in our county, we have communities that already exist, communities with residents and businesses such as Hoseville, Sunbury, Core Peak, Gates, Gatesville, and Yore. All these communities could use infrastructure. Now, what I'm thinking is, why don't we build infrastructure in these communities if we are to build infrastructure? Why don't we build them in these communities instead of an empty field? That is all I have for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney. All right, next, we're gonna move to our department reports. Sandy Pittman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sandy.
Morning, Sandy.
First on my list is budget amendments, and we just have two this month. Number 11 is to bring forward the EMPG grant funds we received last year. They were received too late to be spent last year, so we need to pull them back out of fund balance to be spent for this year. Number 12 is simply to reallocate some funds within the DSS budget. There were two different programs that were budgeted into one line item, and Jeff has requested that we break them out into two separate line items. There's no increase or decrease there, it's simply breaking them out. Those are the only two amendments that I have this month.
All right, gentlemen, have any questions for Sandy on these amendments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right.
The next thing we have is the procurement policy. It's included in your packets, and Toby and I have since sat down and went through it and made some changes. And I believe Commissioner Jordan had called and had a request, and we've made that change. I emailed you a corrected copy yesterday.
If you look in your folder, you should have a highlighted copy with the changes in it.
You wanna just touch bases on the changes and explain them?
Yes. On page two, we've added, we've incorporated the May 31st purchasing cutoff date. Every year, we cut off purchases at the end of May to allow us to finalize our year-end. And also, just added in a blurb about needing original itemized receipts for reimbursements or even for payments to be made for purchases. On the third page, we've incorporated the county manager's approval in with the purchase orders and purchase requests, and also the county manager or his designee. On page, page seven, we changed the wording, I believe, I don't have the other one in front of me, but I believe it said the department that was entering into the contract, and we've changed that wording to the department that's soliciting bids or quotes. On page 12, we've added a section that states this policy will supersede the surplus policy from August of 2006. We've incorporated that into this procurement policy, instead of having two separate policies. The conflict of interest policy, page 14, there was a typo, the general statute that was referenced in the middle of the page, there was a typo there, we corrected that. And the line with the undersigned hereby acknowledges, what to me was not very clear, so we've added conflict of interest to show that by signing this page, you are signing the conflict of interest policy, not the entire policy. And we've also added a signature page at the back for all employees to sign stating that they have read and understood this policy and will abide by it. And we have done that with other policies as well, the tribal policy, the cash management, we require that with other policies as well.
On page 14?
Page 14?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this something that you're gonna get signed in advance of any request or procurement? You're gonna have this last page in the person's personnel file?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is handle it the way that we did. The cash management policy is, once you all approve this policy, have all current employees sign it, and we'll get it out to everybody, have them sign it, and then it will also be included in the new employee packets, like we do the other policies for new employees.
Not just department heads, but employees?
All employees, correct. Yes, sir.
Sandy, I'd like to see, there's a small change where it says, by this policy...
What page?
Last page.
Last page. Where it's signed. Furthermore, I understand that failure to abide by this policy will result... result in proper disciplinary action as allowed by Gates County Personnel Policy. I, I would prefer appropriate disciplinary action, uh...
Sure. Instead of the word proper?
Proper, yeah.
Yes, sir. I can do that.
Which would fall in line to what the Personnel Policy dictates.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Any other questions about this?
On, um, Section C, purchase order, purchase order procedure?
What page are you on?
Uh, well, I don't even know.
At the top of the page?
At the top, the page numbers are at the top of each page.
I'm looking at my copy, I don't, I don't know which ones, so let's see. It would be on three.
It's three, okay.
Three, C, three.
Yes, sir.
The, um, last sentence, the original purchase order is returned to the requesting department for distribution. Now, distribution could be, the only thing that I see is that to ensure that the vendor does get a copy, and I know that's kinda unwritten, but it, the vendor should have an exact copy of that to make sure that he's on that distribution list. And who is the distribution?
Anybody that requires it. I mean, if the department head, if, if the vendor needs it, if the department head needs a copy for, or if a grant funder needs a copy, and would you like me to change the wording on that?
No, 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 I just make sure that the vendor gets, that he has to produce that when we have conflicts, that he...
Right, yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
That's correct.
Invitation to bid, where is that at? Let's see. All right, invitation to bid, A, two, last sentence. All bids must be open in public, and the Board of Commissioners shall award the contract. I think we need to be very specific as to what the public represents.
The public meeting?
No, who is it? Is it, is it the county manager? Is it the finance officer and the county commissioner? Is it the department head? I think we need to be real specific of who's, uh, involved in the public.
When you say it's open in public?
Must be open in public.
Yes.
And who are those individuals that would be present?
Whoever would like to be present, generally, we receive them and...
It'd be the equivalent of whoever came to this meeting is open to the public, whoever chose to come.
The, the date is publicized with the bid when the opening is gonna be, so anybody's is...
Yeah, the, the bid would say bids will be open September fifteenth at ten o'clock in the Commissioner's room, and whoever elected to come would come.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That, uh, to speak along the same line Johnny's talking about here, is that the opening of those bids is made public in advance in the paper, right?
It's, it's in the, in the bid document, it'll say, to bid, it'll give you the bid process, and typically the last sentence or two says, bids, sealed bids will be received until this date. On this date, sealed bids will be open, and it'll give you a time, a date, and a place.
Well, it would have to be a special meeting or a regular county commissioner's meeting.
No, it wouldn't have to be a commissioners' meeting, it would just be a meeting that's open to the public.
And all I'm saying is that we have certain people within our county government that are present, that the county manager, the finance officer, DS officer, or department heads, they must be included in the public.
The department heads that are, are involved with the soliciting are there, and Toby and I are there because we're the ones that are gonna eventually have to review and pre- audit certify.
I understand that, but let's put that into language, that specifically these people must be in attendance.
Or could we, uh, not to actually list the, the titles of, of the people you mentioned about, could we have a number in there, no less than three?
I mean...
And that would give us some room for...
Tip, tip, all public bids are open, are written up the same way, that's open to the public.
I, I think the danger you run into is a sealed bid process is a long process. And if you say, these three people have to be there, and God forbid, one of them got sick and they weren't at work that day, now you have to, you have to start all over on your bid process. You can't adjust the date. If you've, you've publicized a date, that's the date. So I, I think you, I would be very careful on saying these people have to be in the room. I, I think you're, I think you're gonna make, make this process harder than it needs to be.
Toby, can I ask for an example, say like, um, well, first of all, is there, is there a dollar amount to where this, this bid opening, where it begins?
Yeah, and if you'll read on that same page four of fifteen...
Is it ninety?
Right under where it says, it's situational, it's, a pa, apparatus supplies, materials, and equipments up to ninety for construction projects is up to three hundred thousand, or above three hundred thousand. So that gets you into the formal bid range. And, and what we're talking about here is only formal bids, we're not talking about informal bids at all. And I think you were about to ask for an example, when we use a formal bid?
Yeah, well, now, the example I was gonna ask is one that probably has already occurred. For example, um, when we were, um, doing the air conditioning system. Was that, was that a, a public opening?
I know at least one of them, we did in the Commissioner's room, and we're at least two hundred persons.
Let me give you a better example that I can take for sure as an example. When we did the construction bid for the library, that was, that was a formal bid process, 'cause obviously it was one point five million, it was well above the threshold. That was advertised, it was, I would say, I think Chairman was in the room when it was open, I would say it was twenty people or more in the room when it was open. Uh, that would be an example that we have done recently of a formal bid process.
Okay.
But it's a publicly announced meeting?
Yes, it's...
Why, why would we just add the wording, a publicly announced meeting?
True.
Uh, and the Board of Commissioners shall award the contract.
That's fine, that makes sense.
Just so we're clear, that you're not meaning a commissioner meeting, you mean a meeting that is open to...
It's publicly announced.
Okay, as long as we're clear on that language, I wouldn't think that would be a problem.
I wanna be, is be open and transparent.
So our bids must be open in a publicly...
Announced.
Publicly announced meeting.
And, and just for clarification's sake, can we then separate the last part of the sentence? 'Cause I don't want people to be confused where you say publicly announced, and use board of commissioners in the same sentence and be confused on, can't you just make a whole new sentence about the board of commissioners awarding the contract for clarity?
That's fine.
Board of Commissioners shall award the contract. Okay. Got it. Anything else?
Is there anything else, someone? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the Gates County procurement policy effective September fifth, two thousand and twelve, as amended.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you. One last thing I have that was added, um, dealing with the lottery funds. This is really just a formality, but every year, we have to apply to draw down the lottery funds for our county. Even though the project that we have is ongoing, the debt service is ongoing, we still have to do this paperwork every year. Uh, the school board has received that they were going to address it at their September meeting as well, I haven't heard back from Rue, but this just needs your approval for me to send this to the state saying that, yes, we'd like to get our lottery funds this year.
And why would we wanna do that? All right, gentlemen, any questions on this document? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the document to apply for our portion, portion of the lottery funds.
Um, can we state the dollar amount for the, uh, for the camera?
The, uh...
Yes.
Anything that we know about that?
The debt payment amount is five hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars for this year. And they will send us up to that amount in the lottery funds to cover it. For eleven twelve, it was about a hundred and thirty thousand or so. So we're obviously not going to get that amount, but this will give them the ability to send us the funds up to that amount, whatever is allocated to the gambling.
Okay, thank you, Sandy.
So, Sandy, let me ask you something about that then, from what you just said.
Okay.
Now, obviously, this is capital. Is that, now, is there any, uh, different requirements on that of whether we receive lottery funds? Is it, is it tied to capital?
Yes, it's right there in the gray block on this form, it specifies what we...
I mean, going forward, as you retire these, is it going forward to...
It's all, it has to be capital.
All the way through?
Yes, and that, that blob there is the general statute, and that's, that's the recommendation.
They're encouraging you to spend.
Correct, yes, sir. Cannot be used for the current expenses that we send, and this has to be for capital purchases.
Okay.
Or the debt associated with such.
We have a motion to approve the application?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Anything else, Sandy?
Yes, sir, thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good job, Sandy, on the procurement policy.
All right, next on our agenda, uh, our tax administrator, Ms. Renee McGinnis. There she is.
Good morning.
Good morning, Renee.
Do you have your collector's report and nothing unusual to report about that, and other than if you will look under your real and personal property where you have the discoveries, you will see where we have added our two thousand and twelve levy for this fiscal year. And outside of that, that's pretty much about it, unless y'all have any questions.
How's the new tax bill's going?
I think very well. It, it's been real interesting, we have been, we were very pleased with the process, very pleased with working with the company that we worked with. And I'm assuming they're a lot easier to read because we've had some questions about things that have always been on the tax bill, but people haven't realized they were there, so...
I had no open mind yet, no.
So anyway, um, we have been real pleased with that process, and hopefully, the public likes them better than what they have been receiving.
Renee, how many, uh, accounts do we have with Travis Ellis? I know you, roughly?
Uh, right now, Gwen, would you say around twenty or twenty-five that we have with him?
And he'll keep those?
He will keep those, and that, that's an understanding with, um, Zikea's Legal Services, that they will continue on with him, but we will not be turning over anymore.
How's that process going with Zikea's?
I think it's gonna go very well, we're real excited about it, so...
Do you feel like there's, um, do you feel like there's, might be an opportunity to take something back from Travis Ellis, to go the other direction?
That could be an opportunity. We have been working on getting a report from him as to what exactly is owed to him on different accounts and whatnot, so we can kind of assess that.
Renee, I'm, uh, looking at this, and, um, I was looking at two eleven, and then trying to, uh, in my mind, I think, going back and looking at our original budget we made, I believe it was five nine eight three, or something like that, and the two fifty-eight from that puts us at about, looks like about ninety-six percent, somewhere in that ninety-six plus percent range.
It probably is at this point, yeah.
And so it looks to me like we're above, uh, percent and a half above our normal, uh, number that we put in as collectible, so it looks like we're on the plus side. Then you go down and look at the bottom there, where we got prior year of six forty-eight, take the two fifty-eight from that, puts us right at, close at the four hundred that I think that we're carrying on the balance sheet as delinquent taxes. So it does look to me like that we're making some progress.
We're, we're getting there slowly.
Yeah, really, well, these twenties that are in these prior years bother me, but that, that looks like that is becoming the norm. And, uh, so, but it does appear to me that we have made some progress on that norm.
Well, thank you. Anything else? And then the other thing that you have is just simply, the charge to me is collector, or collecting the two thousand and twelve...
We've got some requests for refunds, is we gonna do them?
Yes, Gwen's gonna do that.
All right, gentlemen, we need to charge our tax collector to collect taxes.
I suggest we do that, Mr. Chairman.
Are you gonna read it?
Uh, let me read this. Uh, this is, "To the tax collector of Gates County of Gates, State of North Carolina, Gates County, County of Gates, you are hereby authorized, empowered, and commanded to collect the taxes set forth in the tax records filed in the office of the tax assessor and, and/or collector, and in the tax receipts herewith deliver to you the amounts from the fund, from the taxpayers likewise cautious therein set forth. Such taxes are hereby declared to be the first leaned upon any real property of the respective taxpayer in Ga, in the County of Gates. And this order shall be full and sufficient authority to direct, require, and enable you to levy on and sell any real or personal property of such taxpayers for and on account thereof, according with law, um, North Carolina General Statute's one oh five dash three twenty-one B." And this will be witnessed by the clerk and signed by the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, the bottom, it says, "On two thousand and twelve tax billing, the two thousand and twelve ta, county, Gates County levy penalty of five billion, three hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and nine cent. Uh, two thousand and twelve drainage, eight thousand, twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cent. The fire protection fee for two thousand and twelve, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cent. And the two thousand and twelve town of Gatesville and penalties, forty-seven, forty-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars and eighty-five cent."
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize and empower and command the tax collector to, uh, enforce the tax collection for year two thousand and twelve.
All right, we have a motion of a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. You're charged.
Okay, I thank you, and, um, I will say in talking about the new tax bills, if in looking at them and saying things to the public that's here, if anyone has any suggestions or whatnot, that's a, you know, form that can be tweaked and played with for next year or whatnot, that, you know, would help the public in, you know, identifying what the tax bill is and whatnot, please let us know, so we can see what we can do a little better next year. So, and with that, um, Ms. Harold will go over the refunds with you.
Renee, just before you, uh, leave, I'll talk with you a little bit, and I want to bring it before the commissioners about the possibility of moving forward and identifying, uh, the zoning classification on, uh, our citizens' tax record card. Uh, Board, I, I talked with Renee, and in order to do that, there's a block on your tax record cards that says zone, and it's never been filled in. It's not something that is gonna be labor-intensive for us. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think those who prepare the tax card can glean that information and, and identify which parcels, and it's just a matter of going in and just tabulating those, uh, those blanks. And I would, uh, ask the Board to, uh, to authorize Renee to go ahead and, and look in the future in, uh, filling that block for the citizens of the county, so when they get the tax record card, we know what the zone is. Is it C one, is it's R one, is R H one, is A one, or just whatever it is. Wouldn't have to guess anymore, try to go to the website. So, Mr. Chairman, if I need a motion for that?
If you want it done, you need a motion.
All right, all right.
Are you speaking about on the form or an insert?
On the tax card, record itself.
Well, in all honesty, it's something we will probably be getting done before the, the next revaluation comes along, anyway.
All right, all right. Um, I'll make a motion that we authorize the, uh, our tax administrator to go forward in having the tax record card parcels identified for the zoning classification and tabulated in those blocks.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
My only question is, um...
Should ask a question for the motion?
Well, no, no, I mean, like I say, it's something that's gonna get done, anyway. But, um, is this something you'd like for us to go ahead and start on now, or is it something we can kind of wait till after you get through this moratorium as to situating things with the rezoning?
I think you probably need to wait and see where, what, what changes, because you have some changes probably.
It's, uh...
As the moratorium, I think that would be, be fine to move forward.
Okay, all right, Ms. Harold?
Thank you, Renee. Yes, sir. Yeah.
This is a question that I brought up to her, and actually, it was probably, it was Sandy, when she came in, and I didn't ask Sandy this. Our water bill that you and I talked about, about how we can get it on the computer...
Sandy has gone out, I don't know, this is in reference to accepting, um, online payments from online banking, where it's automatically posted, because the way it is now, where someone makes that payment...
It's a few days, yeah.
Yeah.
Only thing I can tell you, Earls, I know Sandy's looked into it, and I honestly don't know any more than that.
I was too. I mean, I thought I talked about it, but I got caught with the film because I talked with the online bank, always was like the millions out, and then I found out that it wasn't, and I went back and I said, "My God, I paid this thing," and then she explained to me, "No, you didn't."
It's a day received.
We need to change that. Now, it's a big deal, but it's gonna cost the county a lot of money, we probably don't need to do it, Earl needs to pay his water bill.
Well, it's just that because we do not accept them electronically right now, they actually have to physically cut that paper check, and so there is a timeframe there.
Commissioner, I mean, would you check into that?
I will. And like I said, I know Sandy's looked into it, because she's briefly talked to me about it, but honestly, I don't know any more than that.
And I think she has talked with the software firm in reference to it as well.
Who is the software vendor for the water thing?
It's Logix.
Logix again? So they got.
Logix.
So, alright, well, let me ask you that, but they're not tied to the general ledger, are they?
Water is, yes.
Water is tied, it makes the automatic postings to the general ledger?
Yes, because our finances are from Logix as well.
So it makes the automatic posting? Okay.
Alright, you ready to bring Gwen up?
Well, I have been. Any other questions?
Alright, bring her up. Hello Gwen.
Good morning.
How's your arm? Your arm doing okay?
Doing great, thank you.
I'll talk to you about that, because I think I gotta have something done in my.
Okay, alright, doing well. Haven't seen you all in a while, it's nice to see you. I know you don't like seeing me, because we're asking to refund some money to some people. If you'll look at your attachment to the tax report, the first one is in the amount of 178.14, is that what you have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that one is taxes that were paid for 2012 by a third-party agency, and they had an overpayment in that amount of 178.14. We just need to refund that back to that agency. And actually, the taxpayer does not owe any other taxes. However, when a third-party pays those taxes for a taxpayer, we have to refund any overpayment refunds back to that agency.
We'll go through all three of them and then we need to pull one of them out, we'll put what we can act on separately.
The next one, in fact, the next two are the similar situations. Both of these taxpayers have been paying prepayments this year for 2012, and they have overpaid in the amounts that you see, the first one, 388.26, and 176.14. This happens because most people just send us a designated amount, the same amount every month, and they don't realize that the total's already been paid on that last payment. Neither of these taxpayers owe any other taxes, so we would like to request a refund back to those taxpayers for these amounts.
These go back to the taxpayers themselves?
Yes, sir.
Any questions gentlemen? A motion to approve the three requests for refund?
Say move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Alright, anything else Gwen?
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Alright, next on the agenda, Jeff Mark. You already got that, you on the ball.
How are you doing today gentlemen?
Good morning.
Jeff.
Today I bring to you a list of items that's been deemed surplus in our agency and a plan to dispose of those items. These items that we have on the list are computers and technology that have been replaced by our technology upgrade. Chase and myself have gone through each office and we have gone through and determined what has been deemed surplus. This will allow us to better utilize our space in our agency for storage and also our technological room that houses our servers and make that more accessible. So, we're asking today that you will accept the recommendations presented for you, before you to deem that necessary technology surplus.
Will these be put on GUB deals?
It will be.
And if they aren't bought on GUB deals, then obviously they'll go to the electronics recycling program?
That's the same thing that we did, I think I brought you some approximately two months ago. The same process will be used and dispatched as the last.
And I think those were sold for, I don't remember, yeah, it was a pretty nominal fee, but they were in fact sold.
Right.
How long do we leave them on GUB deals?
It's a two, three week minimum.
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks? Hmm, I think it's kinda short. Is that right? Okay, two weeks.
Got 15 meses. Alright gentlemen, we've got a list from our social services department for surplus, so they have a motion to approve the surplus in this equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes sir.
This is probably a question to Toby. Is any of this stuff usable anywhere else in the county system?
I'm looking at Chase and he's shaking his head no. I think the reason why we made this purchase was that this technology was so outdated that it was, it just was, it was worthless, for lack of a better word.
That's fine. Thank you.
Alright, back to the motion. Do we have a motion to approve the surplus of this material from social services?
Say move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you gentlemen.
Jeff, thank you sir. Alright, next on the agenda, Lulu.
I would just like to be able to submit this grant. I think you have a copy of it in front of you. There is no matching money. It's through the Community Transformation Project, if you don't know anything about that. Fifteen counties in this particular group gets four, this year was the first year of $420,000 to be used in three different areas. One of them's active living, one of them's healthy eating, and one of them's tobacco. This one is in the healthy living section. I'd like to get it submitted, because at the end of September, this particular funding for the first year will be over and they'll start again in October 1, and right now there is an abundance of money that, and we've not, in Gates County, no one has submitted any kind of grant. I am on the regional board for healthy eating, so I know that we, there is money available. And I just would like to submit this grant. I think it would help at the center, we're kind of landlocked, but this can be put on the existing fitness trail, and I think it'll bring some families out that normally would not come and use the fitness trail.
What are you gonna do with it? I mean, you got an idea what you want to do with it yet, I mean?
The money?
Yeah.
Right, I wanna purchase nine disc golf, it's like a golf course, but you do it with a frisbee. And I've gone out and measured the fitness trail and kind of figured out where I wanted my holes to be, par threes, par fours, and purchasing two sets of 12 discs. And in doing this, I didn't realize that you can buy frisbees, kind of like you do golf clubs, putters, drivers, mid, you know, I didn't know all of that, but, and I have a lot of walkers at 5:30 in the morning when I open up, and so I, the solar lights put around the backside of the fitness trail, I think would really help some more walkers come and walk a little later, when I don't have lights on for ballgames or something. And the reason I use solar lights, they have a list of things that you can and can't do. And permanent lights are not, they won't fund permanent lights, but they will do something that is movable.
You say this is active living, not healthy eating?
Correct. Healthy eating is dealing with farmers markets, that type of thing.
Alright gentlemen, any other questions?
Gentlemen, I asked a question of Lulu. Lulu, it looks like what you're planning to spend the money on, doesn't look like there'll be any future upkeep to it, I mean, you've got to cut the grass anyway.
Right, the grass is cut anyway, so it's.
Not adding to.
It's not adding to anything. It's part of our part, you know, we would install the holes for the golf, and it says normally put them on, if you can, a concrete slab, but we've got to pay fitness trail, so we would use that as the tee box to start with. And it's just a matter of digging a hole, as you can see with this things and putting the pipe in the ground, so it's nothing major.
Lulu, the one question I have, and this is just for clarification for everyone else, the project is gonna cost about 14,000, the grant's about 9,500. The difference is an in-kind from your employees' work, correct? Okay, just for clarification.
And monitoring and checking out frisbees to 1, 2, 1.
So I guess my question is not, there's not a deficit anybody's gonna make up, it's just gonna be an in-kind?
No, it's just strictly in-kind.
Alright gentlemen, we've got the application in front of you. Lulu's asking to submit the motion to approve the submitting of this grant application.
Say move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you Lulu.
And I think the chairman and I both have to sign it, so we'll have it signed for the end of the day, whenever you want to come back and pick it up.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Morgan Jethrow, our planning director. Morgan, let's take a break before we get started, yours is a long one. Gentlemen, let's take a break.
Alright, very good. Very quickly, just something for the good of all, just to clarify what the purpose of zoning is. It's not to keep certain undesirable businesses out. It is for the overall public good. Without boring you to death, there's a lot I could read here, but we will be having a planning board training session conducted by the Division of Community Assistance. That will be September the 11th at 2 o'clock, and we will cover in depth the subject of spot zoning, and I strongly encourage all of you, including members of the public, to come and attend if you would like some more information on the subject. Okay? First thing we have is Ms. Suzie Valentine has previously requested a rezoning fee waiver that was prior to the moratorium that went into effect. While this is just merely a technicality, we have two options for Ms. Valentine. We can individually waive her fee, or we can allow her to complete a new application, and I can assist her with that as I previously had.
Which would work the best for her?
Honestly, probably just individually waiving her fee, because I've already got the application completed.
Alright, what's the pleasure of the board on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, in this particular situation, as Morgan has said, it's just a technicality because it's under the moratorium, so waiving it is just blessing this individual one. We're actually waiving it for all the county for 90 days. There's been a lot of work that's already been done on this particular issue, especially soliciting response from all of the surrounding neighbors. So, I would say, let's go ahead and, yes gentlemen?
I don't want to interrupt your motion, but if you would allow me, I'd like to ask Morgan a question that may help you with your decision. As I understand, the moratorium, you need 50 lots to be rezoned to get into the moratorium where you can do a public, one-time advertisement?
That'll be the cheapest way?
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, in the county's interest, is it in the county's interest to have 50 or more applicants, correct?
Yes, sir.
This particular one would account for 26 of the 50, correct?
Twenty-seven, I just got one in today, so we have 28 total right now.
Okay, so to do a large-scale moratorium, you would need at least 22 more?
Yes, sir.
And if you, and again, we're splitting hairs, but if we waive her fee individually, that's gonna take 26 off the table, correct? And then we would need 48 more?
No, I will lump her in the mass rezoning, and we can do the half-page ad. That way we don't have to do them individually, it'd be substantially cheaper for the county. So, it doesn't make any difference how you do it, she's gonna be included in that 50, but I hope I get.
Right, at the end of the day, she's not gonna pay, is what I'm understanding, but I just want to make sure that the 26 that you're considering rezoning is gonna count towards the 50 we need.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, so either way they go, that's gonna help them?
Yes, sir.
So you've got 26 applications already?
No, what we did, long story short, Ms. Valentine individually wanted to rezone her lot, which would be a classic case of spot zoning, no doubt about it. So what the planning board did was, in their wisdom, they said, "You know, maybe we should rezone the entire area, because the entire area's R1, and it's a very blighted community with older, single-family homes that could really afford to be replaced." So what we said was, "Why don't we try to rezone the entire neighborhood?" And we picked 27 parcels of boundary to consider to be rezoned. We did send out surveys, I sent out 27, I didn't get a whopping response back, but the majority was that they were in favor of it.
And you're talking about rezoning to what?
RMH1.
RMH1?
Mm-hmm, multifaceted homes.
Anything can be put there, mobile home, upper back?
Mobile home, double-wide, single-wide, what have you.
Was that a unanimous decision among your board?
To rezone the 27 parcels?
This particular?
It was split three and three, so the motion didn't pass. And that is a subject that will be coming up in October. I have to post all 27 parcels in that neighborhood, I'm gonna have to order some signs, so that will be coming up in October for the public hearing.
So basically, we either act on this or not, and wait, is this gonna affect her getting her home in any way?
I don't believe so. She'll just have to redo another application, would be the only other option, and it'll say the same thing verbatim, just a different date.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this?
If you will. Would this delay Ms. Valentine in being able to put her home on a property more?
What I'm going to do.
Than we would normally experience?
Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to hold her application, the 27 others, and whatever ones we get in through this moratorium until the end of the moratorium, that'll be November the 30th.
So she's not gonna move forward anyway?
Right, because we, I want to get us to that 50, otherwise it is going to break us for our advertising budget. So I'm gonna hold them all until I get 50, then we're gonna do the half-page advertisement, and then it'll be substantially cheaper for the county, and she'll have her rezoning and her neighbors as well, and anybody else who chooses to.
Alright. Yes ma'am? Come on up here so we can hear you.
And I'm new on the planning board, and there's others here that have been on the planning board a lot longer, but this was my first probably rezoning experience, and we voted it down, it was 3-3, and I understand that that was a no vote. Well, there are other lots around, and they were notified, 27 people. We had 11 responses back. Of those 11 responses, I think four said no. Are these included in those 27 that will be presented as for rezoning? And seven said yes, resign. But then, there are farms all around, behind this property, and this property is going from Gates to 13. Behind this property, on both sides, there are farms in beside this property, and I don't believe those, maybe they're tree farms, I don't know, but they're big pieces of land. These two people, three people, were not notified. So I think it's a lot to.
and then it'll be substantially cheaper for the county, and she'll have her rezoning and her neighbors as well, and anybody else who chooses to.
All right. Yes, ma'am? Come on over here so we can hear you.
And I'm new on the planning board, and there's others here that have been on the planning board a lot longer. But this was my first probably rezoning experience, and we voted it down. It was three-three, and I understand that that was a no vote. Well, there are other lots around, and they were notified, twenty-seven people. We had eleven responses back. Of those eleven responses, I think four said no. Are these included? And those twenty-seven that will be presented as for rezoning, and seven said yes, resign. But then there are farms all around, behind this property, and this property is going from Gates to Thirteen. Behind this property, on both sides, there are farms and beside this property. And I don't believe those, maybe they're tree farms, I don't know, but they're big pieces of land. These two people, three people, were not notified. So I think it's a lot to consider. It's not just using these twenty-seven lots to go ahead and rezone, to have this rezoning referendum or recommendation or whatever. We have to think about those who said no, those responses that were not taken back. How can we sign somebody's name to rezone something? And also, we have to think about letting those large landowners know. I just, I don't, I need an answer to these. Can we just go ahead and rezone something that somebody said no on?
Let me say, say this. The large landowners, the agricultural zone properties, they can have a mobile home by special use permit, and that's one of the ironies of our zoning ordinance. We can classify an area as R one, and there can be an A one property that comes to the road. And we have that, and this is one of those classic situations. They can apply for a special use permit and put a mobile home in between those R one homes.
Yes, sir.
So our A one classified properties have special privileges, if you will. And so I don't think that, in this situation, allowing to move forward in rezoning would necessarily degrade or take away from them, because they already have the privilege of putting a mobile home there, whereas R one does not.
But they're landowners in the county, and they pay taxes, so I would think that we should at least send them a lot of the other people we're sent.
Is their land going to be resigned, or is their land part of, their land, their zoning will stay the same, right?
It touches them, and as I understand, we were to let people who are around it know. Is that right?
When we actually get down to it, which is not what we're doing today, when we actually get down to rezoning twenty-seven parcels, the individual landowners and the adjacent properties must be notified by law. But just to reiterate, we are not debating whether we're rezoning the area today or not. I just want to know what I can do with Ms. Suzie, and if I can move her on and put her in the moratorium group, or if I have to waive her separately for her fee.
Well, cannot we use her as a special use permit, as Mr. Jordan's saying?
She's an R one, you can't do that.
She has to be rezoned?
You can't have a-
Not yet, not-
Not yet. Unless we, we'll get to that one later. We're going to talk about residential special use permit. But as the zoning ordinance is written down, you cannot apply for a special use permit in an R one zone area.
For manufactured home, no. So for her, we just need to know, are you going to individually waive her fee, or does she just need to create a new application and resubmit it to me?
Well, based on all of the conversation, it sounds like that we're going to be at the same place regardless of where, which one we do. So I would say let's roll Ms. Valentine into the moratorium, and we can move forward in getting those applications and seeing how many we have and process them.
In that case, we won't need no action on that.
Okay, so just move her in with the moratorium then?
And you're going to assist with getting the application.
All right. Moving on, zoning ordinance text amendment. The last time that we discussed this, Commissioner Owens wanted a list of, a copy of the minutes from the ordinance review committee, which you all trust that you got. Again, what the planning board is requesting from the Board of Commissioners is an official text amendment request, because this was just a couple of ideas that were bounced around by a couple of commissioners acting as citizens. So after reviewing the minutes, we would like to know what your intentions are.
This is a text amendment for, I was doing some writing when you were talking.
This was the tech, the four text amendments for road frontage reduction, for removal of T R C from minor subdivision review, increasing the minor subdivision threshold.
And what was the planning board's votes on those?
The, the planning board hasn't gotten it yet, because an official text amendment was never done. It was just a couple ideas. So the ordinance review committee met, we discussed some options. And in the minutes, we discussed different plans for each one. We gave different options. Like, for example, Plan A would be to reduce to one-fifty, leave the acreage requirement as is. Plan B, create a new residential district in town-like areas, or C, leave it as is. So we gave different scenarios for each one.
I'd like to read this a little bit more and discuss it with you, Morgan, myself. I don't know about the other gentleman.
It is a lot to discuss.
I was one of proponents for it.
I like the, I like the, the one where we're going to increase the subdivision from two to three lots. And I, I was in favor of that, moving forward with that.
The, the reduction in road frontage, which I really don't have any problem with that. The only thing that it does, it does kind of changes the landscape of the design. For now, you've got something skinny and long. So there's a lot of, lot of things to consider that. I like what Chuck was talking about, and I, and I'm very, think it's extremely important that we do what was mentioned about our village centers. And I've been in this component for quite a while. That is the place that we want to grow and to expand from and have that. And we have a lot of rural land out in the Gates County that lends itself to larger lots. In village centers, it does not necessarily so. But it does promote the aspect that we are building, building and enhancing our communities as we build with certain desirable properties or whatever. So I really do like the idea of having a epic center, you might say, with a radius within the center point of that that falls within those criteria, which it may be, it could be a quarter of an acre. I could care less if it was nice, well-designed and done. And I think we need to approach this kind of situation. So large lots, and when you start moving out into the country, there's plenty of land in Gates County. And there's no need to, and I don't have any problems with the three lots and the subdivision. That's fine. Families are doing this. What we really need in Gates County, that I see, is a development ordinance, more than anything else. When people start out and having large-scale development center and centers, then they start falling in the districts of these village centers and should come under other guidelines. And I think that's where we've had some big mistakes, and it's fixed exactly what Chuck was talking about just recently, as well as some economic issues that were beyond a lot of people's control that were done this. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on this. In rural areas or outside these centers, I really don't think we really need to do anything personally. That's just my, so. Inside them, maybe so. But if anything, reducing the road frontage and the lot size and correspondence, so you don't have these long, skinny-type things and hinder that. And that's just my personal opinion, and everybody has an opinion. I think, I think we just want to get something that works and is feasible and that helps our citizens and their property rights so that they do have some exercise. Now, I do look back, and I see that you did put the table on here, and I'd like you to send me this in Excel too, please. I see you have the filters here.
No problem. Just a couple of comments. We do have a development ordinance from 1986. It, it worked for a while. It was then superseded by the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So the zoning, the zoning ordinance is what controls those village centers that you're talking about. The development ordinance that we had is antiquated, and it's a very dumbed-down version of what our subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance is today.
Where did that come from?
Where did that come from?
The development ordinance.
It was, it started in 1986. What the reason behind it was, was subdivisions. That was the reasoning behind it. I can get you a copy of that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
But I think that had three, three-lot subdivisions in that ordinance, I believe.
I believe so. And there is a slight correction to make on that table. Excel did not give you those averages correctly. Under a special use permit, the correct number for the average is four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. The conditional use average is two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. But I will get those to you, Commissioner Hora. But back to the zoning ordinance text amendment, I was just giving this to you because it was requested. The planning board would like some direction as to where the commissioners would like it to go with these.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the reduction of the road frontage. Plan B, it says to create, in other words, have road reduction to create a new residential district in town-like areas, reduce acreage to three-quarter and road frontage to a hundred-and-fifty feet. I think that, that could be something that would benefit the county in areas such as the Commerce Center. There are plans that may involve residential development. And I would like to see the text read something like, create a new residential district in town-like or new development subdivisions of twenty-five homes or more, instead of just town-like, but in new development subdivision. You know, that way, if we have twenty-five homes or more, then it would go under this three-quarter acre, a hundred-and-fifty-foot road frontage requirement, rather than the one acre that we have now with a hundred-and-seventy-five feet road frontage. And I think that would benefit, because those areas are new developments. They are designed so that they will, you know, be able to accommodate the citizens as well as have a good outlook on them. So I would be in favor, board, in favor of board of moving forward with the reduction on those type areas, new development subdivision areas with, let's say, twenty-five homes or more. The planning board could bring us back a number that, you know, they could work with, or they thought, the number may be twenty, I don't know. But I, you know, I would think it would be about twenty-five. And we would have that provision in there, and it would also invite developers to come to the county. And to want to come, because they could have a greater development area than what they're allowed to do now. So, and I would, I would be willing to move forward in asking the planning board to make those revisions with the subdivision lot allowance from two to three, and also the reduction of road frontage from a hundred-and-fifty to three-quarter acre in new development subdivision areas.
Commissioner Jordan, your, your comments seem to all be based around what we see as Plan B on this document. Is that fair to say?
Plan B with a little bit of modification. Well, now, yes, Plan B as is, right. I'm sorry, Plan B with a little modification.
Right.
And C as is.
The Whitehurst development, do we know how many residences are in that development?
Oh, gosh, I would dare say probably about fifty. Fifty to seventy-five, somewhere in there.
You know, I made some notes, Henry, as you were talking here. I, I think, I think we would probably need to use a per, if we were going to use Plan B, or some form of modification of Plan B.
Greenway says one-twenty-five, Jack.
One-twenty-five?
One-twenty-five.
Wow, blown away by that. But anyway, we would probably need to use, rather than a linear mile, we probably need to use some form of square mile range for measurement, I would think. Because if not, you know, we would be trying to put this plan, if we were going to put Plan B in force. Chuck Brothers did speak about communities, but they're, or townships is the first thing that comes to my mind. But the Whitehurst is a, is a project, and I wouldn't want to look at these things as a road. Let's treat this road this way, or let's treat this road by this name this way. I think we need to look at an aerial view of trying to make these decisions. It probably would be, if we did it by fifty to sixty homes, we might be surprised how many locations other than what's been named might exist, if we did that.
Let's think about what we're talking about right here. Would any of you like to go out there and take twenty-five foot off of each one of those road fronts and compress them? Would you? Just think about that.
Another thing, since we've been talking about this for quite some time, months and months and months, you know, I've, I've taken notice to other areas. And, you know, when we're making these decisions, we need to make these decisions on, on what's reality. We, you can't legislate how somebody is going to keep their yard. And you can't legislate whether somebody's going to be a good neighbor or not. That's, that's up to that person, whether they're going to be a good neighbor, whether they're going to take care of their property. So this is one of, one of those situations where our decision is long-lasting. If you, if you go outside the county, and you ride and you look where there's low road frontage, and you see the properties there, no disrespect to any, to any one, any one person. But it's, it's true that if you put a lot of houses side by side by side by side by side, the results, the majority of the time, are not what we're looking for. So, you know, we can, I certainly want to make our zoning beneficial to the public. But we need to protect the whole community of Gates County from getting ourselves in a situation that, once it's established, you can't back off of. So I would, I'm certainly leaning, Henry, toward Plan B. But I want to get those, those thoughts out there on, on the road frontage. I'm a little concerned about the road frontage issue, more than anything.
That was a major concern with the planning board, with the ordinance review committee as well, was the road frontage.
I think the original, the original road frontage, when we first started the project, was like one-thirty-five. Then it was increased to one-seventy-five.
It's gone historically from one-hundred to one-twenty-five to one-fifty to one-seventy-five, I believe.
And I, you know, and as far as road frontage, you know, to affect a lot, it depends on the width of your house, the length of your house, if you will. And you, right now, the zoning ordinance says you have to have twenty feet on either side of the house. So, you know, if you reduce it by twenty-five feet, you're going to either, you're going to, you could possibly still be within the zoning requirement of having twenty feet on either side. That's not going to change. The design of your house may change a little bit, and a hundred-and-fifty feet would normally accommodate a fairly good-sized house. You know, you take twenty feet off of, forty feet off of a hundred-and-fifty, in essence, you could have, still have a hundred-and-ten-foot-long house. And I don't think we have that many in Gates County, not a single family, a hundred-and-ten feet in length. Maybe eighty, eighty-five, or ninety at the most. But, so, you know, to take twenty-five foot off of it, basically, it allows developers to be able to better put more homes in a particular area that they've just purchased. And this is what's going to basically benefit. It's going to benefit basically developers that come in. And that was, you know, my proposal would be for new developments and subdivisions, not just individual lots.
Another alternative that I was just thinking about would be, we could create overlay districts. For, for example, the area like the Merchants Commerce Center, where we have a reduced lot, reduced setback overlay district. And we could do that in a couple of other locations as well, where there is high development, and we want high density. So that's another alternative as well. Instead of just changing the zoning ordinance completely to reducing the acreage and the road frontage, that's another alternative, and it might even be easy- that's another alternative, and it might even be easier, be more beneficial.
And to add to that, we have our sewer system that we're just putting in. And that would be able to accommodate this Commerce Center, you know, development. We have new development in that area. So I'm trying to look ahead a little bit. If we reduce it a little bit, it, you know, invites the developer to be more proactive in moving forward, because we won't even have to have sewer system. We can have, use our, I mean, septic tanks, we can use our sewer system to accommodate those residences.
So basically, gentlemen, the, the general consensus is the one-fifty lot and three-quarter lots on the higher-density subdivisions, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, that, that makes sense, maybe, where we're talking about, that it is in a sewer district. But whereas not in Gates County, in certain places, it does not lend itself. Where I'm at, yeah. And you, some other places, no. It, it just, you are creating a problem.
And there are absolutely some places where it would not be appropriate, places where the land already has a difficult time perking as it is, and then clustering.
That would be determined by the health department to start with. That'd be, that'd be their determination on that.
That and your Camelany's plan will guide you with where it would and would not be appropriate.
Well, I, I'll make an addition to that. Let's say new development subdivisions where county sewer system will be provided. All right, create new residential district, in other words, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot road frontage in new residential district subdivisions where county sewer system is provided.
So currently, if we went with that, we're talking about one location?
For now, one location, it could spread, we don't, you know.
Well, the thing about it is, you've got places, let's say, that, that do work very well and, and develop, you know, maybe have a subdivision going there where the septic system would work fine. And, you know, you're really limiting what they can do, because there's only one sewer system in the county in one place.
That's fine, except for one thing, is, is when the developer picks up and he's gone, and now you've just got these individuals. That's where the problem comes. And you've got these development centers, a lot of times, that have these maintenance fees and things like that they're doing, they are managed properties, and they are well taken care of. That's what's happened to us. We've got things, and the man got his money, he's run, he has no responsibility whatsoever. That has become a problem. And that is, if we don't have it tied into the other part, that's what we're going to be creating here.
Let me, let me suggest, if we, if we, the board could agree on, on these three points, one-hundred-and-sixty-foot road frontage, three-quarters of an acre.
One-fifty, you said one-sixty?
One-sixty. Three-quarters of an acre. With, take those two points, let the planning board research how many areas would need, would qualify for the protection that Chuck Brothers was speaking about. That could be, with that protection for those townships or densely populated areas currently, with one-hundred-and-sixty-foot road frontage, three-quarters of an acre, could be something that I could, I could vote for. And because we only, and because we only have one area affected by sewer, I might, would say, yeah, throw that in there too, because that area won't fit, it may not fit the number of properties. But for zoning and planning going forward, I think that should be, any place that has a sewer capacity in place, it's, that one factor alone should make it fit the criteria as well, because that's where a lot of development's going to take place. I would, if, if, if you guys came back with those elements and told me the areas that were going to be affected, I think I could vote, because I want to know what areas are going to be affected by it too. I think I would be ready to vote for, for an ordinance.
I think, I think we're going to talk about that as the next issue, if I may answer your question.
Would you be willing to, sorry.
Go ahead.
Would you be willing to entertain the idea of a development overlay district on the one-fifty-eight corridor as an alternative?
Are we going to talk about it later? Like Henry's saying?
Yeah, I think we're going to touch on this on the R1.
Well, we need to start generating some revenue.
I think we're at a point here where the, the planning board wants some direction from the commissioners, if I'm, if I understand this right.
You got it right.
What we actually want them to do.
You got it.
I'm in favor of it, and I can put this before the board, of a proposal, bringing back a proposal for the three-lot upgrade from two to three. I think everyone is, is consensus on that. And I think there is somewhat of agreement on bringing back a firm proposal on lot reduction, whether it's not in areas of sewer provision or whether consideration is given to the fact that you can now have engineered sewer systems. There was a time, you know, if you landed in Perk, you couldn't get a sewer system. But now you can get an engineered sewer system for, for those areas. So bring something back concrete on that, and I think.
I think that's the direction to do.
I think you addressed two of the three issues. I think there's still a TRC issue in, in here that you haven't touched on.
And parent parcel.
All right, the TRC issue is, for, for small subdivisions, I mean, this, this was, the reason this was brought was to shorten the timeframe it takes to get a property through.
Yes, a lot of counties offer expedited plat review. We don't offer that generally. If you want to just cut off one acre of land for sale, it'll take you about forty-five days, just depending. What we could do, have an expedited plat review system. We could remove TRC from the minor subdivision process. But we would still require seals on plats. That says that the, the land perks, it has been examined by the county sanitarian, the corps, if necessary, so on and so forth.
And that would come and be approved without going to the TRC board and removing a month, possibly a month for a single, for any small subdivision.
Correct. Joe would be responsible for collecting the signatures. I would be responsible for reviewing the plat, and then, if it looks good, sign.
I'd like to put, put something to go and bring that back to us for that issue. I think they'll take care of that. And what was the other one, was the parent parcel?
The last one was parent parcel rule. We really need to tweak that. It's, it's a very nebulous statement. I think we need to adjust that to make a clearer understanding of what the parent parcel rule actually is. The way, the way that it's written is it's not clearly spelled out in the ordinance, and it is very open to interpretation. Somebody who comes after me later on may interpret it entirely different. It does need to be tweaked.
Well, it needs to be determined where the parent parcel starts, I would think. At what point, if you buy a piece of land, you would consider that a parent parcel if you got ready to divide it, not, not somebody divided it ten years before you owned it. I would think that would be an issue that you do need.
Morgan, on that, on the topic of parent parcel.
Yes, sir.
Was there, was there any vote taken on that?
Um, I'm, I'm skimming over it, excuse me. Brothers asked how these divisions were tracked in other counties, and I commented that in Proquemen's. Apparent, let's see, Plan A was, well, apparently, no, sir, we did not have a final vote on that parent parcel rule, but I remember the discussion. We do need to have it tweaked. It is very nebulous. I think I must have left this out of the minutes. But it is very nebulous. It needs to be tweaked for better interpretation, because one surveyor who is local will interpret it entirely different than what one will in Elizabeth City will.
Well, I think the other part to it is the, the timing. If I have, let's say, ten acres or twenty acres, and I've got my home on, on part of it, on one acre, if I pull out another acre and put a home on there, let's say, for my daughter or son or whoever, and don't do two at the same time, then I can't go back later and take the second one, which I was entitled to. So I think the change looks like that we're saying that allow the homeowner to be able to pull out a lot when they desire to, rather than a blanket subdivision at the time of one division.
The problem is, is that it can be literally interpreted, interpret, sorry, interpreted, is if a landowner does not subdivide two lots at the same time, they forfeited their right to their other subdivision. So yes, that's the problem that we need to fix. We need to have that clarified.
Right, I think that's.
If you're all in agreement with that.
I think that, that sounds like a problem that we need to fix.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. In that case, the text amendment form, very simple. I can get that to Diane, and we can all, we can get it submitted.
Chuck, did you want to say something more? I saw you move it in the.
The parent parcel thing, I thought we had discussed, and there again, it was vague in the interpretation. But nowhere does it say in the ordinance, that it does not entitle the landowner to take the two lots. There's, there's nowhere in there, and I thought that was one of the in-depth discussions that we had about that, that surveyor A and surveyor B could interpret it two ways. But really, the ordinance doesn't read to, to the effect that it does not say that they are not entitled to it at any point in time.
Well, it's not clear, I guess.
It's not clear, and that was some tech, that was some language that I thought we had added in some minutes of a prior discussion.
Are you sort of saying it's assumed, but it's not, it's not stated? Right. It's a, it's not stated.
You're going to need to make that, make that adjustment with the four-lot subdivision, right? I mean, the four, the three-lot minor subdivision needs to be, everything needs to be tweaked, tweaked around that, I think. I think the charge of that, understand what the charge is for these, these items.
I got it. Okay, moving forward. Planning Board recommendation for zoning fee moratorium. Again, this is probably just a moot point, but the planning board, at their August planning board meeting, the, the board discussed the recent fee moratorium that is set to go, that is set to go into place, it already has. I have gotten one application so far, several phone calls, but one official application. After lengthy, lengthy discussion, the board voted in favor of the moratorium, only to the degree that the planning board reviews the fee schedule by their September meeting and will provide a recommendation of the new fee schedule by the end of the moratorium. And that is why you all have the, the table to see where we fit.
Well. So, and this is what, when I look at this, I see this is where we have a problem to a certain extent, in my opinion, with the rates that we got. I mean, you can look at others here, but I think in Gates County, we need to be a little better about that. I'd rather encourage people to get them there and put them on the tax rolls than to get the one-time-use fee out of them. I'm looking long-term revenue, not short-term problems. And I think even in this conditional, this moratorium, whatever, and I know it costs money, as you were talking about advertising and whatever, that we reduce the fees and make them, that they are reasonable, that a person don't feel like that you're sitting there gouging them to use their own property or whatever. And so, you know, six hundred dollars to rezone and five hundred dollars special use permit, to me, seems extremely excessive for gate rule, eastern North Carolina.
And I, I think it's, it's, it should be considered also, because, you know, the homeowner's taking a risk in paying five hundred dollars for a special use permit, not knowing whether or not the Board of Adjustment is going to approve it. So, you know, while they should pay something to, so that we can recoup the cost, but if the Board of Adjustment doesn't approve it, then they're out of five hundred dollars. So it, it, it doesn't encourage the citizens of the county to utilize that process, because first of all, they're going to have to basically gamble on five hundred dollars. And there's not too many people that want to gamble on five hundred dollars unless they're pretty sure that they're going to get what they are applying for. So, as Commissioner Hora said, and I, I propose a hundred dollars, and that may not be the right number, but I certainly think it should be much less than five hundred.
At the next, at the upcoming meeting, the planning board will review the fees and will give you a recommended new amount, if you would like.
Based, based on the cost of what, actual cost?
Yes, and by looking at the averages of what the other counties do. I mean, you can see the average for a rezoning is four-hundred-and-thirty-six.
It should, it should be, I mean, that's kind of high, I would think, you know, the average. But anyway.
Okay.
I would find what it ca, actually costs us to, to do a rezoning, maximum amount.
It, it depends, but it's about average of three-fifty to four-hundred dollars, depending upon the size of the ad. Okay? Last thing, well, next to last thing. Now, we have not done the public advertisement to make this an official text amendment change. That will be upcoming in October. There was not sufficient time to run a public ad for a hearing. But in regards to planable recommendation for manufactured homes in R1 zone, I have to be in full agreement with Chuck Brothers. I would strongly encourage you not to approve this when we have a public hearing. It would have the potential to degrade the village centers that have historically been single-family residential homes, such as what I call downtown Sunbury. I would encourage you to allow manufactured homes as a permitted use in the A1 zone alternately. This would protect community centers, and it would permit manufactured homes in roughly seventy-five percent of the entire county. So, and that will be something that will be coming up in October for public hearing.
Okay. I'd like to touch on that. We, we've talked about this and tossed this around. What would be appropriate in allowing manufactured homes in R1 districts or zone areas? I think the answer, and I, I'll read it, I, I took the time to, to pin this, because, you know, this is a, a subject that seems to have a lot of controversy surrounding it. I would say that we can revise the zoning ordinance to allow manufactured homes in R1 zone districts by special use permit only, except the core residential and business areas of Sunbury, Core Peak, Hobbsville, Yure, and Gates Townships, which will continue to exclude manufactured homes unless an area is currently zoned RMH1 for mobile home parks, which we have in Sunbury, which we have in Core Peak. Now, core area is defined as the area extending outward from the declared center of the village for one-half mile in any direction on paved, state-maintained highways or the area of reduced speed limit within the core area of the town, whichever is less. What we're saying, within a half a mile area of the, of our townships, our villages, manufactured homes will be excluded on, on state-maintained roads, unless there's a mobile home park within that area, which you would continue to allow manufactured homes in there. Gentlemen, the, the irony of this, and I took the time to make some copies, I didn't get enough for everyone, but we can kind of pass it down. In our core areas, maybe Mike can share one or two of those. We did, yeah, all right. You'll find that in our core areas, we have a mixture of R1, commercial, and in Sunbury, you have mobile home park. And Core Peak, you have the same situation. But also in the core area, you have agriculture land abutting the main highway in between this residential area. Now, if that person that owned that land wanted to put a mobile home. Now, if that person that owned that land wanted to put a mobile home there, they could apply for a special use permit. So now, that gives special privileges. But I think that if, if we would, would put the core area half-mile change in, in place, it would also require exclusion for all those areas within that core area, even where we have agriculture abutting the road frontage in that core area, and it would be fair across the board. So, you know, I, I believe there's validity in the proposal of the planning board, but I would like to see us consider this and move forward with it on our, our next board meeting. I'll give you a copy.
Okay.
Diane, would you pass that through?
As a compromise, would you consider the idea of maybe a new zoning classifications that would prohibit them from the core areas, but permit them by special use permit outside those core areas? Would you consider that as an option?
I think that's what we just think.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I like this myself. I think it's a very, a very good thought up way. You think about areas where you live, and Hobbsville being the area where I live at, the center of Hobbsville was designed at the, at the middle there, and you go each road, and that pretty much limits outside. We got mobile homes already outside this area, and it would make it, make it eligible for areas around it. Most of it's agriculture other than that, so.
Okay.
Well, the only, the only thing I see a problem with this, Henry, is this half a mile from the center. And basically, if you think about that, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty feet, you multiply that times twenty, you're at three thousand feet, which is more than a half a mile. So let's, let's get to twenty, you know, twenty-five hundred feet, and how many homes that you could have on, let's say, on Thirty-two North, Thirty-two South? That is what you do. You start working from the, the major road things with the number incremental homes that you would have within this quote-unquote center. If you started it with a half a mile, you, and that, and that would be the general radius thing internally, but when you got to that specific thing, you want to grow from the inside out with this, the R1 type deal. So you know, you, so you basically address where your current situation is and have, and take this hundred and fifty foot, if this is what we go to, and this is how much buildup we want before you can enroach on this something else.
Well, I, I put some thought into the half a mile.
Right.
I originally looked at quarter mile.
Yeah, that won't work.
But that was, that wouldn't work because, you know, it does not extend outward far enough. But, but I think a half a mile is, is, is reasonable, and then we also include the reduced speed limit. If the reduced speed limit is less than a half a mile, let's take maybe Hobbsville. Hobbsville may, you know-
That's about probably half a mile.
It's probably about, maybe a half a mile, so, you know, there's things to be considered, but I, I think this is a starting point. This is something where we can work from. It may need to be tweaked just a bit, but it, it gives us some idea of, of how we can accommodate this situation that we've got, where we've basically zoned the county R1 and, and not made provisions for manufactured homes if a citizen wants to do that. Now, it does not mean that they're gonna put manufactured home where there's a request, because the Board of Adjustments has to approve that. The Board of Adjustments will look at facts like, what do the surrounding homeowners want to do? If they do not want a, a mobile home there, they have the privilege of saying, no, I don't want that. So it's not just a blanket authorization, it's by special use only. But it does give the homeowner the option, you know, they can talk to their neighbors and whatever, and, and if everyone is in agreement, then it can happen.
Morgan, going back, if you'll put this in your notes, when you're considering Henry's proposal here, I would like for you to consider the Gatesville district. It's the only incorporated township. Rather than start from the center, whatever the center of the township is in Gatesville, you want, when you go a half a mile down these roads, you want to get out of Gatesville.
We don't, we don't have any authority in-
Well, I'm just saying, in our rules, measure, don't think about the speed limits, go outside the start, rather than the center, speak about the town limit a half a mile from there out.
We don't have any control over the town limit anyway.
But we still have to select where it begins.
And that's, that's what I'm addressing, Jack, is exactly what you're talking about. Internally, this, that works great. If it's, let's say the lot's right on next door, that works good. But if it's on the end of the town, you wanted to grow the town outside, with a certain, right? And that addresses exactly what you're talking about.
What I'm saying is, in Gatesville, you can't select a center, so you've got to select a different point as your half a mile measurement. You following me?
Yeah, I follow. I think instead of using exact things, like when the speed limit changes, or half mile, we need to find more quantitative, definite ways of beginning and end of jurisdiction.
Because DOT can come change the speed limit anytime they choose to, so.
It's just like you're talking about. You've got a hundred and fifty foot of standard road frontage that you want something on. How many, how many of this kind of development do you want within the city, within the town, the center of Ga, of Gatesville? How many of these do you want on any primary highway? Do you want, do you want ten? You want twenty? How many do you want to exclude? That tells you how much footage you need. And the planning board can actually do that.
Okay. I think also there was a topic of grass cutting that, that was mentioned. Did you want me to, to discuss that, or?
Yep, it's on the agenda.
Um, I, I, go ahead. I, I've gotten numerous complaints, especially in Sunbury, Sunbury area, and, and I agree with Mr. Roundtree. You know, if a zoning ordinance doesn't protect your property to the extent that the next homeowner can allow their property to degrade to, to a point where it lowers your value, I don't think we have much credibility in that type of zoning order. So I think that we should move forward in having some kind of requirement that says that the, the grass should be a specified length. If it is over that length, then, you know, it's subject to, to some type of county code enforcement.
It sounds like what y'all are searching for is minimum housing standards, where you have residential areas where your grass can't get over twelve inches tall. A lot of these things could be covered in the landscaping ordinance, but it sounds like when it comes to the junk and, you know, just not upkeep of homes, it sounds like we're looking for minimum housing standards, and I can draft some for you.
I think it needs, we need to address it.
I can. That's not a problem. This is a problem that occurs every year, and in about sixty days, it'll be done for, for, until the next summer. So I can get that for you, no problem.
I think if you ride around in, in some of these places that Chuck was talking about, that you would see the exact examples of these, or wherever they've been foreclosed by certain people, they are not the banks or whatever. Somebody's not taking care of these things and making, and, and which is kind of surprising if you wanted to sell something, to me.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Morgan. All right, next thing with our old business, Mike Scott. Good afternoon, Mike, how you doing?
I'm good. Thank you for referring to me as old, but hopefully this won't be too old, more of an update for you. Mr. Chairman, I bring before the board today and, and the citizens of Gates County, just a brief update on the county's two CDBG-funded projects. The first and all update you owned is the, the Gates County US Highway 158 Economic Development Wastewater Project. Of course, this is also the project that is serving in part the Mill Pond Development on 158. As you all will recall, the county has applied for and received funding from EDA in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars, funding from CDBG Economic Development Program for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the North Carolina Rural Center for seven hundred thousand dollars, and Golden Leaf for two hundred thousand dollars. Project's now underway. As you are aware, the first phase has been bid and awarded to HD Rentals Construction, and they are approximately seventy to seventy-five percent complete with Phase One of the project. The next phase of the project to be bid out would be the wastewater treatment plant. In the memo that you have, I, I mentioned that it would probably be about thirty days before that phase is actually bid. That will probably be extended a little bit, because the engineer is still evaluating different sites for the spray irrigation facilities. That will be a part of that project. Presented to you the budget, including the funding sources there, and basically what parts of each funding source are paying for each phase of the, of the project. Of course, the Phase One A and the wastewater treatment plant are still estimates, and until we have those numbers nailed down, we're still working with a project that's approximately a little over, almost two point eight, or over two point eight million dollars. At the date, the county has drawn down two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eight dollars in CDBG economic development funds, and there's a balance of a hundred and twenty-four, five, five ninety-two in CDBG funds. The county will be drawing down EDA and the Rural Center and Golden Leaf funds and the balance of the project. Any questions on the wastewater project?
As was mentioned earlier in the conversation today by Mr. Pierce, Mike, from day one, obviously, I've been very skeptical on this, and by running the internal rate of return on this project, provided numbers that Gus and Toby had provided to me, and when I originally got, I think we were plus eighty thousand dollars, and then we went to three hundred, and now we're seven twenty-nine, which I know we've already expended some of these funds. I get, are in part of that.
Sure.
But, you know, and what Mr. Pierce's point that he brought up is, is a actual fact that is happening across this country. And we have already spent six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to Kavanaugh, and which I, I guess some of these dollars are included in this seven twenty-nine.
Yes.
And-
Well, I, I, I'll back, I don't know what all we've spent with Kavanaugh, because I know you had some other dealings with them, aside from this project.
And so, it's, it is one of these things that I hope and pray that we become successful, but it doesn't look very good to me on paper, and has not for quite some time, and I've been very vocal about that. Of course, what I'm concerned about, I guess, is, I know this money is coming from people, and in my days, when I was working, I was accountable for what I did with it, and the return that my company got on this asset. And we hurting, I think, personally, and to seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand or seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, trying to look at the capital investment that we got to get back a reasonable rate of return, or hopeful, is, you know, it's, it takes a lot of capital to do that. Eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars, about twelve million dollars, we yield about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars of revenue right now, under our current rate. So, that's ten years, just to recapture this. And so, you know, of course, there's some side benefits too. Hopefully, if we have some retail, then that we're doing that, but the, the real facts of it is internal rate of return, and you don't have anything to do with that, Mike, not one thing. And I don't blame you one bit, and I appreciate what you've been doing. I think you've done a great job. I think that we just got ourselves in, in a place that we're between a rock and a hard place. And I do have one plan, I think, that can help this. I don't know if it can come to fruition or not, but it bothers me when we are spending this kind of money from, and that, some of it is Gates County money, some of it is probably federal money indirectly like this, but it is our money as a country. We are sixteen trillion dollars in debt. That's more than fifty thousand dollars for every person in the United States. That's a shame. If you were making fifty thousand dollars average for forty years of work, you would generate two million dollars in your lifetime. You wouldn't pay the taxes. If you pay your taxes and your social security and all that stuff, you're not what you're bringing home. So you owe the government fifty thousand dollars. That's terrible. And so, I hope we can make a good thing of this, but I am very skeptical with what I've seen over the last four years, and when I look at the money that we've spent, I just don't see the return. And so, tell me something positive, Mike.
Okay.
The positive thing I see is that even though there are a lot of developments that failed, there's a lot of them across the country that did succeed, and there's several of them that have, only Halifax County, it went real well. And it took a while to do it. Problem most of the time with failures is because people quit before they get to a point of succeeding. It's been my experience. When you fail, you fail. You fail yourself when you stop.
That's what happened to the Randy Parton Theater.
Yeah, because it was fail to start. All right, anything else, Mike?
Uh, just a report on your CDBG capacity grant, which is your Gates County Housing Assessment Project. This project is also well underway. As you will recall, the county received a grant of a hundred thousand dollars to undertake a housing assessment and create a housing conditions report, primarily for the county to use in, in future housing grant programs in the, down the road, and also to give you just a really good, up-to-date report on the current housing conditions in, in Gates County. The county did contract with the Gates County Housing Committee to implement and oversee the project activities. They also contracted with PRO to provide the project administration services, and also to prepare the fa, the final housing assessment report. The housing, the, Mr. Chris Couch is, is handling the actual visual housing assessment throughout the county. He's using the database that was provided by the Gates County Tax Department that broke out the fair, poor, and very poor houses, according to the tax office records. To date, well, of those, out of those records, there's approximately one thousand one hundred and forty-eight houses that were determined to be either in fair, poor, or very poor condition to date, Mr., or actually through a little bit before the end of August, Mr. Couch had, had completed over seven hundred of the visual evaluations, and this is all documented in a Excel database. And then in addition to that, he's also actually securing preliminary information forms from some of the homeowners or the occupants themselves, which will be very valuable to the county as you look at future housing development programs down the road. As far as the budget on this project, of the hundred thousand dollars, the ninety thousand dollars was for the planning line item, which is the actual housing assessment, the visual assessments and so forth. And then there was ten thousand dollars in administration. At the date, there's been thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and four cents spent out of the planning line item, and three thousand dollars spent out of administration. The project's on schedule, it's to be completed by May twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, and it's in budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions. What I don't know, I'm sure, Mr. Commissioner Jordan does.
I'm gonna ask the first question.
Okay.
What is Code Twelve?
What's it?
Code Twelve. Code, Code Twelve, right here.
Oh, you know what? I didn't even bring that report with me, but if I...
You wanna copy that?
That's, that is just the code for planning.
That's, okay.
Planning and administration.
Your basic codes, coding.
Okay, all right, all right. Oh, they had me. I didn't know whatever.
He would've, he would've told you, but he had to kill you.
Got simplistic account numbers.
I, I think, you know, this is something that's been very good for the county. It's allowed the Housing Committee to do an assessment of where the needs are. And as the applications are being given out and coming back, that's gonna give us a database to pull from to apply for other grants.
Absolutely.
You know, this is the need that we have in the county, and this is the conditions we have. So, I'm very thankful for, for having received that, and, and thank you, Mike, for the job that you're doing on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going in our new business section. I can't imagine having a surplus on disposition that needs to be taken care of.
Actually, I have two. You should have...
Missed one.
I missed one?
Jordan Old Courthouse.
That's at the bottom.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I told you I was gonna be headed to the bottom.
Oh, I thought you said that, okay.
As I was saying, you have one in your packet, and you should have one in your folder that you should've gotten today. The one that was in your packet is for the HVAC condenser in the extension building that went down about a month ago. We replaced it. We now have the old compressor that has no value other than its salvage value. We'd like to take it to the recycling facility on one fifty-eight.
Do I have a motion to...
So, move?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
The second is the conference table in your old commissioner's room has been replaced, and we need to dispose of the former table. We'd like to put that on Gov. deals, and if not purchased, have it discarded.
All right, got a motion?
So, move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
That's all I have, Ms. Chair.
All right. Next, on the agenda, I've got a appointment to the Nursing Home Committee Advisory Committee. I think it's a reappointment, all right? A new appointment. We've got Glenda Boone, Glendale Boone, I'm sorry, would like to be appointed to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. She's a retired teacher. Y'all have a application in your folder. She's asked to be appointed to this, this position. Do we have, did we have any other requests for this position?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know Glendale very well. She is a very compassionate and dedicated citizen of this county, has served in numerous capacities, and I make a recommendation that her application be accepted for that appointment.
Second.
We have a non-pull nomination for this committee, which will have...
If you don't have an application, I don't think we would need to, would we? That's the only way you can apply.
All right, we've got a motion to accept the application for the Advisory Board, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next on the agenda is the vice chair, Henry Jordan, with the Courthouse Committee.
Okay, recently, or one of our previous meetings, we authorized the clerk to the board to advertise for a committee to make decisions on going forward with the old courthouse. And as a result of that, we had a, an announcement in the Gates County Index for solicitation to citizens for notifying the board of their willingness to serve on that committee. I'd first like to have an update from our clerk, if you will, if you're prepared, of how many responses have we had so far?
We have received two.
Two responses. Can we divulge those names?
I guess, in Mr. Bell.
Okay.
Do we have anybody from this Torque Society apply?
I suppose we're, um, we're in the office today, and she was gonna be working with this Torque Society. I got a call from Eden Salin, that she was not going to go out and petition. She said that they needed her advice, and she's prepared to give her a call.
Okay. We still need citizens for that committee. I would encourage the board that we would, you know, at least two commissioners, I'll volunteer for that committee. Like, I think we should have at least two. We're continuing to run that solicitation in the paper. Cal is here, and I, I would hope that it would, would continue to run for several editions.
It had a cutoff date.
Oh, it did?
As of yesterday.
How many times have we run it so far? Three, three times. We've gotten two...
Three more.
Two responses.
Commissioner Jordan, I'd like to...
I have been working on those questions that we talked about. I got, currently have eight questionnaires that I'm, I think, there again, that our input coming from our citizens. And we can go ahead and form that committee and, and do that, but, and maybe that would be the thing. But these questions are something that I think that needs to be shared with all of our citizens and encourage them to participate and give their input and be proactive with their feedback to them. And I was hoping that probably twenty questions, but I know eight specifically, and that I think that would involve this and address some of the issues that we have with the courthouse and future plans of want to do that, and then let the committee draft up a plan of action. And I'll be glad to do anything possible to see that we get there.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
I'd like to be the second commissioner to serve on that committee.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Owens has volunteered, and, and I volunteered. If we get more than three, we would be in a...
Trouble.
Public meeting situations, but certainly as an observer and, and a participant from the public, Mr. Hor, Commissioner Hor, we certainly welcome your addition as well. I would ask that, first of all, the clerk, that you would request formally from the Gates County Index that they would carry it a couple more weeks. I would also ask that we consider contacting three names that Mrs. Claudia DeVini suggested. Ms. Linda Hoffler, as she recommend, would one would be good on that committee. Mr. Benny also recommended Ms. Reed Elaine, and also Mrs., or Miss or Mrs. Susan Schultas. And if you would make contact to see if they would be willing to be part of this committee as well. Also, Mr. Benny recommended Reed Thomas. She has up Scott Powers, that he would be willing to serve as well, that we would make some type of formal contact with him and see if he would be willing to assist us in this committee. And the third thing, or the next thing, would be that after these contacts are made, that at the night meeting, I'd like for us to determine a meeting date for this new formulated committee as a board. And...
As a, as a commissioner sitting on that board, I would, would request, would ask you to bring some, some suggestions for a meeting date.
All right.
Chairman, yeah, I would create that question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Would it be possible that the commissioners would allow...
Can you come up here, so we can hear it?
Sure.
Would it be possible for the commissioners to allow a, the applications to be right here during the next commissioner meeting for those to wish to be part of the committee? I myself...
Bring them to the commi, bring the application to the meeting.
Sure. Would they be, would they be available right here at the commissioner's meeting?
She'll, she'll have the applications for the next meeting.
Because I myself also have an, an interest in this as well.
Okay, yeah. They're online if you, the application is online, if you would like to get, get one off.
I'm a pen and paper type of guy.
Okay, she'll have one here for the next meeting.
Understood. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
She'll have one for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. All right, is there anything else, Mr. Commissioner?
All right, I think that, that takes care of it, and Diane, you will... Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda, we're going back to our citizens' comments. Ms. Ann Howell, we've got Timmy here, we want to make sure he was here for your comment. I mean, you come.
I'm Ann Howell from, from the U.A. District. And all the commissioners know, I'm sure, why I'm here. And my question was, was there anything in place in the event of being out of town for several months, and we still have to pay the water bill and the trash bill with not a drop of water used or a piece of trash carried?
Uh, Ms. Howell, let me, let me address that. I've talked to Timmy, and we've talked this over. I think we already have something in place for your water. Right now, the Water Department has a provision where you can notify them, and they will come out and turn off your water for the stated period of time. They say if you're leaving in November and coming back in April, they will turn it off. You will not be billed for those months. Now, the minimum charge during those months would be like ten dollars. But by having it cut off, you would, it would be, you wouldn't pay that ten dollars, but you would, upon notifying them to turn it back on, you would pay twenty-five dollars. So, I think that is a provision. It's not written, but it certainly would save, the citizens, save you some money and any other citizen who's gonna be away from home a number of months.
It would save twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, it would save twenty-five. And there are some costs associated with, you know, coming out and cutting it off. And I think one of the advantages of having it turned off is the fact that, you know, in case if there was to be a leak or whatever, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that, that problem or, or concern because your water's not coming into the house at that particular time.
Yeah, we turn it off at the, at the road, you know, where the meter ears.
Right. But that's, that's one option, that's one thing, and Timmy can expound on that a little bit more if he needs to, but that's, we already have it in place. I would suggest and recommend that we try to put that into our water policy so that citizens are aware of that and, you know...
One of the big issues, most folks that go out of town, they're only out for a month or two. In order for that to be benefic, beneficial, you have to be gone for at least three months with your water in act. And in three-month duration, you save five dollars. But it's, it's kind of an insurance policy that if you don't have a hot water heater or roof, which is something I need to talk to you about, we come in, one at the plant, a water heater or roof. I mean, it's been there fine, and it's split right on the side. So, in the event of cutting your water off, it, it prevents issues such as leaking pipes or hung-up toilet, because I'm sure you're gonna have somebody coming by checking on your place. We, we've had issues with that where, when we were out of town, we had somebody checking on the house, yes? Or did they use the restroom? I don't know. When we come back in, we didn't notice the toilet was running. So, it, it's little things like that, that by locking it out or turning the act, making the water and chugging water off while you're out of town, it, it, it prevents a lot of liability or potential disaster as far as water leaks, hot water heater. And also, it, it, it null-voids your bill. You will not receive a bill until you call and have it reconnected.
What about the, the trash fee on that? Is that limited?
Trash fee, that's on the water bill, but it had nothing to do with that. But from what I understand, the only way that you can take the trash fee off is by having electricity deactivated from your property.
I can't do that because I have a security system.
Hey, and, and that, that, I understand that. But the way, I believe, I haven't seen them, it's been a while anyway, but the bylaws or whatever that was set up by the commissioners back when the trash fee was put on the water bill, it was set up with the only way you could have that taken off and not have to be charged, the solid waste fee, is if there was no power to the residents. The reason it wasn't done just with water is because so many boats out there still have low water, as well as county water, and the ability to switch back and forth. It, we, it couldn't be regulated, I say, when they don't have water, so apparently they, they're not living there, because that's not the case, because you have means of, of gaining water from a private source. So, as far as the solid wastes, you, you could probably set it up to go on a quarterly billing cycle.
But you still got to pay the same amount.
Yes, Mike. That, that is my understanding, that unless there's power deactivated, that, that is a set fee.
Well, the only thing that does is keep you from, you write one check instead of three checks if you pay it by the quarter, but you still pay the same amount.
Right. And, and that's something that, that the commission, if you have to work out then, because I, I don't have much knowledge.
I think it's set up by the Waste, Waste, uh...
Not actually enforced by the...
The Consortium of Waste Counties, our, our county consortium there.
I, I'm not sure of that. Commissioner Hor sits on that board. I, I don't, I can't speak to that.
John?
No, we don't. They are individual. They come from, from what we put in our budget.
But we bill it, but we don't set the fee.
Well, one thing, gentlemen, one thing to keep in mind, I think, is, and this doesn't help Ms. Howell's situation, but the fee is set to make the, the system, the, the waste system with the trash facilities and everything, the fee is set not based on how much I put in there, how much John puts in there, how much Ms. Howell puts in there.
That's right.
It's based on what we need to make it...
Having, having the service available.
Right. That's right. So, you know, so, I mean, for example, I, you know, I never put trash in there.
Well...
And, and there are other people in that same situation. And then there's some people who've probably put, you know, contribute a lot to it. But, but that, that fee is basically set so that that service is, is available. For example, in the future, when, when that cost goes up to us, we'll have to decide to go to seventy-seven dollars instead of seventy-five, so. So, just keep, I mean, we need to keep that in mind, that the fee is set to make the system work for the, for the whole county.
Well, and I've been working on this for a while, and my thoughts on that, which I got over a hundred and forty thousand records from Renee, put those in, and that was three years worth, and it just so happened that February of this year was missing, and I don't know why that happened, so I've got thirty-five months of data. I can set and plot every account number in Gates County, their usage from month to month. And what you said, Ann, is very important, that you do turn it off at the meter. When you physically make that, and I didn't realize that you would actually, that we had that impulsive, that you would call in and they would actually come and turn it out. So, I think if you call in and it's documented, and you physically turn that meter off yourself, well, I can go back five months later and read that meter and determine that you haven't used any water unless you have a leak. So, I don't see any necessary thing other than a follow-up here, because it's, I mean, it is physically possible to tell what has occurred. Another thing that I happen by looking at all of these accounts, that I've gone and I write down the specific names, obviously, and I... Another thing that I happen by looking at all of these accounts, that I've gone and I write down the specific names, obviously, and I look at these individuals living in this home, two people live there, and the gallons that they use on a monthly basis. I write down to the next-door neighbor, and, well, he's using three thousand gallons and more, well, has he got a garden, has he got his flowers, or what, what's going on, what's the difference in people's habits, and you don't know those, but it does get very interesting. And I've, I've sent Henry this, and other guys too, but I updated a few things, and what was it, Henry, ninety, sixty percent of the people use less than five thousand gallons a month. There was thirty, sixty-seven, there's thirty, thirty percent, thirty percent use less than two thousand gallons a month. Now, the only thing that concerns me, and, and the reason I got in this is because of what Mr. Luther said, and I, and Timmy brought this up two years ago, I thought it was a great idea, I made a thing in February, and I, and I still think it's a great idea. I thought, I liked the two-month deal, I thought it was, it's a money-saving deal, it's a time-saving deal. The, now I'm in an opinion to move that further out, the only problem that I have is leaks. So, Timmy, out of these, it's four thousand and twenty, which is, I think it's, I think it's two hundred and seventy-one, hundred and, there's two hundred and seventy-one that use nothing, so they are you trash customers only, like me, I have my own personal well, so I don't do that. So, when you got this kind of matrix data, what, out of that statistical data, so that'd be two, three, about thirty-seven hundred, how many leaks do we, statistically do we have out of these?
Hey, Barry, um, the majority of the leaks we come across are washer leaks, um, it's a washer on the head and the tail end of both meters where they make the connections.
Right.
A year, we'd probably go through fifty or sixty just washer leaks, and that's a conservative number.
So, a hundred out of thirty-seven hundred, one thirty-seven.
And, and that's.
Three, three percent.
A lot of times, that, that's just no calls, get a caller to order in a meter box. Um, that's not including, somebody had, somebody cut the grass, run over it, and gillicked in their line, that, that's not including accidental leaks or of that nature, that was just washer leaks. I have not really gone back and, and looked at a tally number, I can go back to my board and probably give you the amount for the last six months, we keep track of.
All right, if you can, I'd like for you to send me that, all of the leaks that we've had for the last three years by account number, if you can.
Wow, I see, but that's the problem, a lot of the things, we don't deal with account numbers, if we find them, we're reading meters, we'll stop, we'll replace them, and we don't even make a note if it's on our side of the meeting, um, because it doesn't.
You had a person's name?
It doesn't affect the customer's bill, because it's leaking on the, on the head side of the meter versus the tail end side, isn't that right?
And really, and, and what's happened, when I've gone through and looked at this, I've see, and I've shared that, I sent Henry that too, is the variances, so what I did out of this thirty-five months, I took the men and the max, and then take the variance, and there's obviously quite a few accounts that have errors in them, they either read wrong, they recorded wrong, or something happened. Some of them could be leaks, but it does tell me that, so what I'm trying to do is calculate the probability and the impact on a gallon basis of what, and you just gave me a piece of information here, about three percent of what the exposure is as far as water in itself, and.
But that three percent is a huge headache.
I understand that, I, I.
And, and right now, we're just proceeding a bill every thirty days, we'd love to go to a five-monthly.
And that.
I'd be scared to stretch it out further than that, because I think it's gonna make the headache even worse.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, let's get back to Ms. Howell a minute, when we'll discuss water bills, she's standing here, and what we're talking about is not helping her at all.
Well, I think, I think what we.
Give her an answer.
What I think we should do, and I, I realize what we got, but if a person calls in and that's documented, is to do the exact same thing, you request them to turn the meter off at the base, whenever they get back home and they want it on, or whatever, if they would recall before they turn it on, so that we can read that meter and tell what, if there is any usage or not, and whatever, and, and waive it those, I mean, really.
You're saying for us to turn the meter off and not to have them actually.
No, 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 it would need to be done by, by, by the county, because, uh.
With the valve that we turn off, and what we would do, we would turn it off and move and lock it.
And the fee that you, you would.
And it keeps anybody else from coming and turning your water on while you're out of town and swimming.
You, the fee that you would pay to turn it back on, basically pays for them to go out there, cut it off, put a lock on it, and turn it back on when you come, when you're ready, I think that's basically what that fee would cover, cost-wise.
So, for five months, I saved twenty-five dollars, but it's there when I get ready for it.
But why is that necessary, that we actually, other than what you said, that we lock it out if they're taking personal responsibility for that?
We can't take personal responsibility for our valve.
The valve, the valve she's cutting is ours.
And we turn on and off to, to connect and disconnect the water, it's not intended for customer use, it's a brass-on-brass valve, and that's a valve that.
You're talking about the one with the T in it, is not.
The tail valve, that's a brass-on-brass, no gasket, that, that, that valve is not designed to turn water on and off, on and off, on and off, that brass-on-brass wears, and when you turn it off, it's still leaking.
I, I understand that, Timmy, she's.
That's the reason everybody has a hand valve, and that's just the service of us going out, and it, that service fee covers us going out there locking it, and also, in the event that something happens and it does start leaking, we, we're still there for you, we're not just because you got inactive account, we're not gonna mess with you, we're not gonna violate you.
I didn't mean to stir up a hornet's nest, but I didn't.
So what, so what happens when Joe Felton drives out there, what does he do?
Uh, when Joe comes out there, he's a plumber, and he has to write two stories for one, for two, if he has problems with that valve, Joe is on speed dial with him, he's calling to several sites when he's had issues, and for three, majority of the work that he does, if there is not a hand valve in line, now, places a hand valve in line for the customer to use, that you can go down there with your hand, a quarter-turn valve, and turn it on and off.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Versus having to have a special wrench and tool.
So, you're telling me that what Ann did was wrong, turning it off?
What, are you turning the valve?
No, we, we turn, we turn, we turn that handle, that hand valve.
You have a hand valve?
Yeah.
She turns her valve off.
Not ours.
We turn it off on our side.
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to you doing it on your side.
Okay.
Okay, one.
But they don't have the ability to delock to keep somebody else from coming and turning their water on without, we do with all that.
Okay, one other thing I want to tell you, the signs in Ua have been changed.
Yeah, I talked to Joe this, I was, that was part of my, my, when I got the commissioner comments.
And I came out of Harrell Lane the other day with nothing coming that I could see, and almost got ran over by a highway patrolman before I could turn in White Oak Road.
My gosh. Thank you, Ms. Howell.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on, we're, we're gonna do the commissioner comments, Kenny, you're at the end of the table, let him.
Certainly, certainly I'd like to thank everybody for coming, I got a call from a Mr. Joe Nichols, the Woodman of the World.
I was gonna do that too, but go ahead.
All right. I've, I've got the note. In honor and remembrance of the nine, nine eleven, they're gonna give the Gates County Rescue Squad a donation of a flag and a flagpole for the Rescue Squad on Sep- Saturday, September fifteenth, at ten-thirty a.m., commissioners and the public are invited, and would love to see as many people there as possible. And hope Kyle will put that in the paper maybe a little bit ahead of time, so some other people can see it, and would like that to end.
If you'd like to talk to Joe, I got his phone number. Jack, you got anything?
Well, we made the national TV this morning, Gates County.
Did we, what did we do this time?
I don't know if anybody saw this or not, but they showed a map of North Carolina on, I believe it was on the Today Show, and we have two hundred and nine dead people on our elections roll. It was, what, they named four counties.
How many times did they vote last year?
In North Carolina, and, and we had two hundred and nine, so anyway, we made the news, they know where we're at, a gentleman actually took this upon himself to, to do this nationally, and, and I think they selected, in his comments, he selected about six states, but North Carolina was the only one they really focused in on. But anyway, just thought I'd let everybody know that little tidbit this morning, thank you for being here, I, I think we made some progress today, I want to, I want to congratulate the planning board, they're the hardest-working board, I guess, because they have so much to come before them, and I know sometimes that they, they probably come to this meeting and leave and think they haven't accomplished anything, but when you're talking about rezoning and setting ordinances and policy, it is very important to be deliberate in our decision-making, so that we don't have to retract and revisit so often, so I hate that they're not here to hear that, I hope somebody will tell them, but I just want to thank them for all that they do, and thank the citizens for their input.
All right, Johnny?
Well, I'm glad to see everyone, especially those that are staying again, and I've already said a few things about our debt that's been brought up and talked about at the Commerce Center, that's one thing that still is dear to my heart, it's extremely important, and I just can't emphasize how important it is. I look at the expenditures that we've had, and I've got, for the last five years, basically, every vendor and every check that's written to them, and looking at those amount of monies. I've also seen what we've done over the last years, I just, just like that, spend the money, I mean, you look at the Kavanaugh, you look at the LS3P, you look at some of the grants, you look at some other things, and we do it because, hey, we want it. When it comes time to save money and be proactive to save money, we throw two hundred thousand dollars away, I mean, just literally throw it away and extend our debt by five years. This just eats to the core of my being, as an individual and as a professional. Now, if I didn't think we had the money, it'd be different, but we have the money, and I don't like throwing two hundred thousand dollars away. It's extremely serious issue with me, and I'm not happy about it at all. People have to make their own decisions, but we can't, and we're not, and as I said, I, they're at the Commerce Department, it's a long shot, it's a long shot, but I just hope and pray that it materializes, but this is something that is guaranteed. I mean, it is in the bank, when you sign the paper, it's in the bank, you can count on it, so, and to Jack's credit, he did at least offer some point there of making incremental payments of what, something I had talked about previously. Well, that incremental payments, if we were to do the incremental payments of what I was talking about for those ten years, it would save another, it would help us recapture a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that two-hundred, now, obviously, I want the two-hundred, I like the internal rate of return of forty-two percent versus twenty-six percent. So, we're getting ready to, to make this loan, guys, and I'm taking to heart what Jack said, and I guess you guys voted against it because you didn't like, you felt like you couldn't have an additional fifty thousand dollars for the ten years. Well, we're getting ready to borrow this money and make this thing, so what I'm asking you is, let's recapture and get started here on the right foot, so whatever the payoff is, if you reduce that by the forty-nine thousand dollars, you recapture twelve thousand. Now, we do go back and, next year, you can, you have the same problem of whether you want to do that, but now, and, and it's really more than that, when you make it in, in the front rather than in the riz, so if you make this forty-nine thousand dollar commitment at the very beginning, you still have an opportunity. Now, it's not two hundred grand of what I want and think that we should have done, and you can vote against it, you can do anything you want to, but I'm telling you, this is a problem, it's a problem that we got in this country today, as Mr. Pierce just alluded to, that people do not understand, you don't spend any more than you take in, and you need to be taking and be proactive with everything that you do to save money. And so, I think we need to really make a, think about this, I've had a lot of comments in my area about this, people coming up to me, and I just throw up my hands, I've done everything I can do, I can't do anymore, let the facts on the table. So, with what Jack said, I don't know, I think we need to be proactive and reduce our payoff by forty-nine thousand dollars and get started on the right foot, there're gonna be new people up here, definitely know there're gonna be one, they might be new people two years from now, four years from now, six years, eight years, change, I see that happening. But I sure don't want to start off wrong, and we just need to save money every place that we can and try to grow our revenues, and you, you just gotta do it. So, anyhow, appreciate all of you people being here, and I ask my colleagues to think deep and hard about the debt and where we're at, and because we need changes, and we need to save money for the citizens of Gates County, we need to improve the quality of life of all our citizens, and so it's, it's, it's very important, I couldn't exercise it anymore, but I thank you, and I hope that each and all have a great afternoon.
Henry, you got anything?
Uh, yes, thank you, I too thank everyone for coming, and thank you for the privilege of serving as commissioner for you this past four years, and I look forward to serving another four, I'm dedicated and committed to that, just wanted to put that out there, that I'm not one that sign up for something and then change my mind. And, so I'm here, if, if it's the desire of the public, I plan to be here as long as you would have me. I too am concerned about the county saving money, and, and I was one of the first ones that promoted the idea of using a shorter-term debt, especially when the library came about, we went to the, we borrowed five million dollars on five years, but also, I'm also concerned with the fact that when we make decisions as a board, we make those decisions based on two things. First of all, based on the knowledge that we have of the situation, and based on the knowledge that our professionals have, that we've hired our finance director, our county manager, and when you put both of those together, you come up with the best workable solution that's gonna be the best solution for the county, and in having said that, we had several proposals for refinancing our debt, and one of them was ten-year, and the other one was fifteen-year, and as I've said in the past, that based on the recommendations of our professionals, and based on the knowledge that we as a board have, that sometimes you can pay off your debts ahead of time, but you also have to consider the fact that if I pay off ahead of time, I have. but you also have to consider the fact that if I pay off ahead of time, I have other things that I'm limited in doing. So I would just ask the public to please consider the fact that the board does give it thought. It's not a fact that you're losing two hundred thousand dollars in savings. It's a matter that we are better able to serve the community as a result of taking on a longer-term debt, but we still saved six hundred thousand. So I, I think the board needs to be commended in, in moving forward in a decision that's had the county's best interest in mind, not just to be able to say, we, we saved you eight hundred thousand dollars versus six hundred thousand. Because there could come a time when you would have preferred that we went ahead and, and did the fifteen-year refinancing. The other thing is, we've moved forward in the clearscapes, contracting with them to do an initial phase-one assessment of courthouse. And I would ask county manager, have, have they started? Give, if you would just give us some kind of, of idea of where they are.
I, I don't, I can't really speak to where they are. I can't answer the question of have they started. The answer to that is yes. They have started. They were here two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, I know they spent a few to several days here doing their evaluations and, and where they are. After that, I can't honestly speak to, but I know they have started their evaluation process.
And they will be providing us report. I'm, I'm wondering, I guess the next thing would be, do we need to invite them to our night meeting, just to give us some idea of where they are? Because we, you know, we...
Yeah. I, I don't know if the night meeting may be a tad premature. I would think maybe the October meeting. And, and I would definitely say you would want to invite them to your committee meeting, or at least try to have a representative at the committee meeting, so that you can start from, from day one with what their assessment is, or what kind of guidance they can give you.
Well, I would ask that we do just contact and let them know that we may want to be at our October meeting.
Yes.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to speak on was, I was citizen speaker stand. It's, it's been asked of, of the board that consideration be made, whereas the speaker stand could, could be turned in a position where the audience could partially face the speaker rather than having their back to the audience. And I think that, well, I know that it was moved because the speaker speaks with the commissioners. The audience can hear. We, we've made provisions for that. But if we were to move it, we would still ask that the speaker direct their questions and comments to the commissioners in lieu of the audience. And I, but I would, I'm not opposed to moving it, and if Chase can accommodate that, I'm, I'm in favor of allowing the speaker to be able to partially address the audience as well, as long as they stay aware that they are talking with the commissioner, commissioners, not the audience per se, because that's, that's what citizens' comments are about, is to let the commissioners know what their desires are, rather than to get a point over to, to the audience.
Really?
One other thing.
Right.
I would just ask that, and I won't go into any detail, I would just ask that, you know, obviously, there's been some circulation of, and and concerns about possible loss by county manager. I think, first of all, I want to say that he's done, as far as I'm concerned, he's doing a great job. I'd like to keep him, but nevertheless, that has to be his decision. But I would ask that if such a decision was made, to please make preparation for a smooth transition in providing the board with various types of contact information and advertisements that are necessary in order to move forward in, in a replacement. And I don't know if Tom, whoever you want to respond to.
I would say my short answer is sure, absolutely. And, and I think it's premature for anyone to, to start to decide what the next steps are, because there are no next steps. Right now, my commitment to Gates County is, is strong, as strong as it was four years ago when, when a different board, but the same board of commissioners hired me. If there is a decision to be made, then obviously, my family and I would, would make it, and, and you would be made aware as soon as possible. And if there are any contingency plans that are needed, then, then obviously, they would be put in place in, in the board and the operations of the county, which is the most important thing. Would go on, unabated.
All right, like, if...
If I may ask a question?
Yes, sir, I ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Come on up here.
Yes, sir, my apology. Commissioner Jordan, you mentioned earlier about moving, perhaps moving the podium. If this was to be moved, and a presentation was presented to not only the people of Gates County, but also to the commissioners, I would ask that there would be no censorship, that there would be a continuation of the five minutes that has been previously ordained by you all. So if this podium was moved, and perhaps a presentation was made, within the five-minute increment, I would ask that the censorship would not be taking place. There was times in the past where I myself was censored. So do we have your guarantee, sir, that we would have our five minutes to make whatever presentation we would have as a citizen of Gates County?
Oh, I'll answer that, Thomas.
Yes, sir.
At this point in time, it is my prerogative to make that decision until I am, as long as I am chairman of the board. And you will allow, be allowed, unless it gets out of hand. After I'm gone, it will be another decision, but it is mine now, not, not, not the vice chair.
To be clear, I have your guarantee.
To be clear, I have just said...
Five minutes.
You'll have five minutes at my discretion. That's what I'll say, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, and the law allows that. That is per law. The chairman has that authority.
All right. Now, thank you all for staying. I got a couple, just one little thing here. This is a thank-you note for the commissioners in the county. This comes from the family of John Roger Lane, Jr., acknowledges with grateful appreciation your kind expression of sympathy. It says, "Thank you for the basket of delicious goodies you sent to us. Friends have been so good to us. We appreciate your thoughtfulness and concern. God bless Rita and Roger Lane." Now, other than that, we, we lost a very strong influential person in our county when, when John died. A young, young man, a lot younger than I am, and we felt sorry for, for the family. Y'all keep them in their prayers. And from his point on, we're gonna move on, and we'll entertain a motion to close, to adjourn the meeting.
Some who?
Second.
We're a little adjourned. We're, we've got to recess, right? We need a motion to recess the meeting.
Some who?
Have a second?
Second.
Call them, say hi. Thank you.